Ready, we're gonna call to order the general discussion workshop for the city commission for Tuesday, August the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. City clerk, you can call the roll, please.
Mayor Owen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mager.
Here.
Commissioner Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner Colode.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, um, first item, we're gonna come to public participation in just a minute. Before we do that, I wanted to just take a moment and publicly apologize. Commissioner Sacks, I was a little short on one item at the last meeting. It's below the, you know, I brag all the time about our city and our, our commission, that we always treat each other with respect, and it's something I wanna hold up, and I felt I dipped a little below my, my personal standards for professionalism on that, so my apologies. Uh, with that, public participation, is there any members of the public who'd wish to speak? This is your chance. You're gonna have, uh, three minutes. I'd actually just be respectful of that, for your neighbor's sake, for our sake, so we can get through as much business as today, but we certainly wanna hear from you. You've came, you've had something on your mind, uh, if you wish to address that with us, uh, just address the commission, not the, not the public. We're the ones making the decisions, and, uh, we'll follow up on those usually at the end, if there's something to follow up on. If it's here for one of our discussion items, we'll just all talk about it at that time. So if you pose questions or make comments, it's not like we're just all gonna then, it's not a dialogue, it's just a chance for you to, to share your, your opinions that we will take into consideration. So, with that preamble, public participation.
Donna Atherton, six eight four Corbin Park Road, New Smyrna Beach, Florida. Um, I just wanted to come to the commission, just to put in your, in your bonnet, something to consider when, um, addressing these farmers markets and the products that they sell. Um, we encountered several, um, vendors that aren't following cottage law rules that are according to the state, so I submit to you the Florida statute for cottage law, in order to keep our, our, um, public that's shopping there safe, because a lot of products can cause illness. Products like honey that's been infused with products, products like, um, olives and grapes that you wouldn't think would go bad, or, or, um, pickled items. Um, but the labels aren't stating that it's a cottage, under cottage law, and that the ingredients have been altered or changed, and none of the ingredients are listed. So if I, as a consumer, buy the product, yes, I should beware of the items that are in it if I have allergic allergies. But it needs to be stated so that when you approve, um, the vendors at these farmers markets, or when those applications come through, that they follow the Florida statute. So I submit this to Kelly to include with your packets at another time.
Thank you. Thanks, Donna. Anyone else for public participation?
Good morning, Lori Shannon, seven fifteen Francis Avenue. Um, since the last meeting, I did have a question in regards to, for example, the apartments that are gonna be built out there. Once a developer has presented the plan to the city, how long do they have? Is there any statutes of limitations before they start building? Is there anything like that?
Okay, I'll come back and answer that once we finish, yeah. There's someone to answer, I may not. Yes, come ahead, Jessica.
Good morning, how are you guys this morning? I hope you are doing well. I'm Jessica, uh, seven oh five Francis. I, um, know that the park across my, the way on our street has been treasured by everyone in our community. Actually, I know that for some people, it's just a vacant lot, but for a lot of kids, it's open play area space where they can explore and, and be creative, and so I'm hoping that that's still on the agenda to be considered as just green space and keep it that way, because as you can imagine, we have plenty of other spaces in the community, so I'm hoping we can preserve that space if possible.
Thank you. Any others for public participation? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Jennifer Swager, seven thirteen Francis Avenue. I'm here again. I still don't know all the rules, but I'm catching on.
Okay, you're doing great.
Um, as far as the green space on Francis Avenue, reiterating what she says, we love it, yay, you've all heard that. I wanted to see if I could follow up, because I'm not quite understanding where we've been removed from a list. I believe that list is the available properties we have to have, blah, 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 to show for buildable. Um, and obviously, we all argue that we would prefer a green space there. Um, some of us have used the word park, myself included. When I said park, I don't necessarily mean we have to put playground equipment there. Lack of better terms, I'm learning maybe we should say green space. I'm thinking benches, a dedication, a garbage can, but I will tell you, the worst part about that place is there are signs that are falling over right now that say no dumping. And the only thing we've used that for on our street is when we walk our dogs, because they make a great picture in front of those signs. So honestly, it looks really trashy. We don't have problems with dumping, we don't have problems with trash there, we don't have problems with people hanging out that shouldn't be. Um, so I wanted to find out if we could look into what the actual zoning is. Is the zoning to build on? Is the zoning for green space? Is the zoning for a park? I wanna know, I wanna understand what the zoning is and what we can do moving forward. And again, I'm still questioning that there are multiple lots there, not one, so I wanna know which ones are falling under that, and if anyone can direct me in that. And I know you offered your, I could not stay late the other day, so, sorry, I did not get your number, and I would've asked, so, thank you.
Thank you. He's got his card here. That's all right. All right. Any others for public participation? Yes, sir, come in.
Michael, Michael Shannon, seven fifteen Francis Avenue. Hey, good morning. Um, my question is, I have a question too, maybe you can answer it before, so I don't have to, uh, FOIA request stuff, is, um, I heard that there was twenty-five thousand dollars that was offered as a, uh, uh, an offering to put a park on this property. And, um, I don't know, Mr. Colode spoke to me about other ways that can be used for that. However, I'd like to know if that there has been other donations offered for various parks in the city, and if that money has also been designated as for that park, or distributed to other things, as far as for parks or for, uh, housing development or anything like that. Just, uh, I'd like to know, 'cause if money was designated for, from either a private entity or a government entity, if it has distributed in different ways other than designated for that piece of property.
Okay.
Okay.
I wanna make sure I understand your question. You're talking about for the Francis property, you're talking about any other monies?
Not for that, no, I'm talking about in, in that, in the history of New Smyrna Beach.
Yeah.
If monies that have been designated for parks or areas, if that money has been taken by the city and dispersed in other areas, other than where someone is, is offering to designate the monies.
Gotcha, all right.
Okay.
We've been around like two-hundred-and-fifty years, so I can't answer for the whole history of the city, but I'll.
Is it something that I need to FOIA?
Uh, I mean, you're welcome to. I, I'll come back to it.
I know, but does it cost money to FOIA?
Well, that kind of, that's a pretty comprehensive request, if you literally say the history of the city, so yeah, that definitely would.
Okay.
This would take us.
Is it something that the council can find out without me FOIA?
Uh, it's something I'm happy to have staff answer, but I don't think it's routine practice. We'll have staff answer. So, yeah. Let's, we'll talk after this, and then if you need to do more, you can. Any others for public participation? Yes, come in.
Good morning. My name is Cindy Snuzak, five twelve Upon Street. Um, two questions, please. I'm not sure what, um, where the discussion will go on the options for one-twenty Flagler, but if you could consider it, it seems that because of its visibility, that it might make, at least in the interim, a good place to have some sort of temporary, uh, police presence, when it comes particularly to special events that tend to draw a lot of people, Bike Week's one example of that. So, uh, it's prominent, you couldn't miss that a cruiser was parked there, et cetera, but it actually might make sense, unless you're using another property on Flagler that I'm not aware of, for something like that. So it seems a, a reasonable thing to think about.
Okay.
Um, the other has to deal with the ordinance fifty-three twenty-two that you did first reading on, uh, Tuesday night, and it's also on the agenda in the, um, leased parking and parking district. That ordinance dealt with taking two-fourteen Columbus and including it into the parking district, as well as the two lots next to it, I guess were added that evening. Um, I'm still unclear based on how the give and take went on zoning, whether or not what they presented with you are changes in the size of the parking stalls just for that, at the request of the applicant, or if we're now changing the size of the parking stalls, reducing them from ten feet by twenty feet to nine feet by eighteen feet. So if we could get some clarity on that, I'd appreciate that. I also did not hear at the zoning meeting, and not sure what authority you have, but it appeared that that was going to be a single ingress egress from that parking lot, and that there would be, um, angled stalls. So it begs the question on, um, safety. I didn't hear that anyone did a safety review or any sort of safety study, but, um, it just seems like that could be an issue, and I hope to have discussion on that before it's voted on. Also, the applicant was very clear, he wanted to pay that lot and not leave it permeable, which is a bit of a concern as well. Also, those measurements kind of bugged me a little bit, because I know how large the trucks and vehicles are that come up and down Ocean. Uh, I'm not sure if it's Ocean Avenue or Ocean Drive, uh, where I live, but, um, so I looked a few of them up that I see, and while a standard F-one-fifty, like you have in the parking lot here, would fit in an eighteen-foot stall, any of the enhanced F-one-fifties could go up to twenty-point-nine feet. Uh, same thing, an F-three-fifty starts at nineteen-point-three feet, goes up to twenty-two feet in length. Tundra nineteen feet, uh, Yukon eighteen-point-eight feet. So my point in that is, people aren't great parkers to begin with, and, um, given that there'd be so much backing in and out of there, I wonder if having that turned into a private lot really makes sense for anyone, from a safety point of view, but also from parking. Okay?
Thank you. Any others for public participation today? All right. Seeing none, we'll close public participation. Wanna come back, try to answer a couple of these questions, staff, I may come to you on a couple of them. Um, on the apartments, a question about how long, uh, we have, that the answer is, it varies, it depends on the type of approval. Um, some of these things we're dealing with now were put in motion with no expiration date ten years ago. What this commission has been more judicious about is, if we're doing anything like that, we include expiration dates, anywhere from two years, five years, whatever seems reasonable, but we certainly don't wanna do the same, you know, repeat the same mistake. Uh, when it comes down to, in this case, it was more of, they have the vested rights, they weren't really asking for anything, it was more of a side approval process. Uh, there are some parameters around, once you pull a permit, how long it's good for, et cetera. So, uh, you could get some more information on that from the building department, but it just kinda gives you an idea. It varies. There have been some in the past that probably should've had expiration dates, it didn't. We've tried to fix that moving forward. Um, on the park, your question's on the, uh, on the park and the zoning, yeah, that removing from the list would be removing it from that property list designated for potential housing, so that was, if I understand where you're at, I think it's a positive thing from your, from your perspective, so just sort of clear on that. Um, I know you had some other questions, I think we'll get to them as we discuss that item. Um, on the, the FOIA request, happy to have you FOIA. No one appears afraid of FOIAs. Uh, the, the question is, have we ever, have we ever done that? Have we ever had, you know, money that was designated that went for something else? None that I know of, none in the past four years? I don't know, Khaled, can you speak to that? Do you have any?
I could tell you, Mayor, uh, that I recall, uh, the playground at Riverside Park, um, that was, people have donated money specifically for their park, and it was used for their park, so I have not dealt with where people donated money for a specific item and it was used for something else.
Yeah.
Usually, it's a specific, uh, donation for a specific project.
Yeah, and we have funds, I mean, if you just can, first of all, not a lot of people donate money to the city, let's just be very clear. Most of us pay our taxes, and that's the last thing we give to the city, so, uh, but in the rarest since it does happen, it's usually very linear. I mean, we had, we have playground equipment at that park that was raised by the, the, uh, Mama Jones, I think it is. So, you know, it's very linear usually, it's like, hey, we're gonna write a check, the city usually matches it or puts even more with it, and then we go in and put that in place. So, um, do you wanna add something on that?
Yeah, just one point. We did take four thousand dollars for a dog park.
Yeah, that is true, yeah.
That's a park.
Which is gonna be reapplied somewhere else.
Yes.
Yeah, that, if you, and if you want more on the dog park, you can call Commissioner Colode. Uh, the, on the police presence on Flagler and one-twenty, um, so we've, we've talked about that several times. Certainly, they use that lot and any other business that, every other business on Flagler cooperates, cooperates with our police very well. They're, they're welcome at, as far as I know, any of those locations, and they routinely have presence at many of the locations. The gas station around the corner of Cooper is, is a very central spot that they often will have two or three or four officers and patrol cars during special events. Um, this notion of a, a, a satellite, you know, office or any kind of a, you know, an office down there, um, that's just not needed with the way, you know, police are highly mobile. They, they take care of what they need kinda right on the, on the scene. Um, they're not running back and forth to the police station a lot. If they run anywhere, it's to leave a scene, to transport someone to, you know, jail, basically. So, um, so we, we've talked about that before, and, and we've worked with our police chief, and we're very comfortable with how we're approaching that and, and what the potential would be on that. Um, and then some of your other stuff on, on Columbus, we'll, we'll get into some of the details of that. I don't know that I have answers on all of those things. Um, good, good concerns. The city did take a, a, a stab at purchasing that. You may recall, I don't know if you were a part of that, but we did take a stab at purchasing that. We were approached first. We had the first row of refusal to purchase that property, to make it public parking, to be able to control exactly how it was done. Uh, many residents came forward and requested that we did not do that, so we did not. Um, then, now this has come up, and I, I don't know how much we'll be able to control what happens, since it is a, you know, private, private enterprise, but that's what we're, what we're going through today. So, hopefully those are fair answers to all those questions. Um, and on the farmer's market, I, I don't disagree with you, we'll, we'll look at the information you passed up. Okay, we're gonna start, I guess we'll start at the top. Khaled?
Good morning, Mayor. Um, I didn't want it to sound like, um, if you wanna confuse them, give them many options, but, uh, the commission has asked for as many options as, as, as possible, uh, concerning this, this property. So, uh, what you have before you is, is seven options that I came up with. Uh, I'm sure that there's many other options that it's available, but, uh, the first option is to relocate the building to Old Ford Park. Um, that was one of my first suggestions when we, uh, first purchased the property. Uh, the building on the rivers, on Old Ford Park right now, the Connors Library, that was relocated from the corner of Washington and, and Faulkner back in the early nineties, and it serves right now as an office for the development, uh, economic development and CRA. That option, if we relocate the building to the Old Ford Park, that will serve as additional office space for, uh, city employees, uh, as well as we preserve the building, and then we could create some additional parking, uh, on site at one-twenty Flagler. Uh, the cost involved with that, uh, is about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, there's a zero missing from there, for the relocation, and then, uh, a hundred-and-fifty to set up the foundation. Uh, as, in terms of the, the, the cons for this, it's, it's obviously the cost to relocate the building and set it up. Uh, also, we have to work with DOT to relocate the building across the bridge, and then also when we get into the traffic light at Baracuda and the North Carsway. Uh, option two is to relocate the building to the AOB sites. Um, same, uh, in terms of the, uh, the, the benefits, is, is to create additional office space, uh, create more parking on site, and then preserve the building. Uh, again, the, the, the cons is to the cost to relocate the building and set it up. Um, option three is to relocate the building to the northwest corner of the property. That was suggested early on by Commissioner Colode. Um, the building would remain on site, obviously, uh, you create some, uh, additional office space for city staff, create maybe some, uh, slightly additional parking and preserve the building. Um, it's still, there would be a cost to relocate it to the northwest corner, and also you have the handicap ram into the building that you have to address. Um, the cost is for the relocation is thirty thousand dollars, and then a hundred-and-fifty to set up the, uh, the foundation. Again, these costs are, uh, cost estimates. We don't have an actual cost, because there is, nobody will, will give you an actual cost, so, uh, unless if you put it out to bed. Option number four is to relocate the building to two-thirteen Cedar Avenue. That was, uh, an email that the commission received from, uh, a private citizen who owns a vacant lot on Cedar. I have met with her, uh, and also her neighbor. Uh, she would like to move the building there, and, uh, you know, I asked her, so what is the benefit for us? And she said, well, you, you will reserve, preserve the building, but, uh, we still have to pay for the cost to relocate the building from one-twenty Flagler to two-thirteen Cedar Avenue. So there is some cost involved there, and you would not get any reimbursement for it. Option five is to keep the building and convert to city offices. Uh, that will provide additional offices for city staff. Uh, again, the cons there is to, that we will have a high property value for only office space, and you don't receive any, any taxes on it. Um, the cost obviously is minimal if we, if we do that. Uh, option number six is to place the property back for sale. Uh, you will get your money back, uh, there is no, uh, cost involved. Uh, option seven is leasing the property, um, and that will generate revenue, uh, for us. There'll be no cost involved, and, and there is no cons for that. I know when we purchased the property, Mayor and the commission, obviously at the time was, the property was available. We were thinking about improvement for, uh, the intersection of Flagler and Peninsula. So, um, at the time, we didn't know how much if we need anything from it, but it was available, and we thought with the intersection being as tight as it is, that this might help us, and here we are. So, uh, you have seven options in front of you. Uh, I'm sure there is more options available, but, uh, these are the options that I came up with, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Gentlemen, what are your thoughts on this? Mike?
First and foremost, we have to improve the traffic situation out there at the intersection. We've had, uh, a couple proposals. We don't have a final design yet, or approved design, but that's why we bought the property, was to improve the traffic situation out there. First and foremost. Now, as to item three, relocating the, uh, the building, I'm for that if it's necessary to provide land for the traffic improvement, whether that be, uh, we subdivide a piece off, make it smaller, whether we get access easements, uh, to go around the corner and do improvements. If we have those, and the building is in the way, we gotta relocate it. If it's not in the way, we can go with option seven, or, excuse me, option six, sell it. I'm totally against buying older buildings and trying to renovate them to somehow fit some need we may have. So, yes, relocate the building if necessary to provide proper traffic access. If not, uh, just sell it and build the traffic improvement. Intersection improvement's the main thing.
Okay. Others?
So I basically agree with Commissioner Colode. Um, I'm gonna back this up and say we bought this property for a specific reason, which was the intersection improvement. I'm not quite sure where we're at with that, but I wanna move forward with that. I don't wanna dumb down the intersection improvement to appease a few people. We need the intersection improvement. I think it's gonna help. Now, so, so that's the first thing, and if we're not gonna do the intersection improvement, sell everything, put it back on the market, get rid of it. But my, but my goal number one is to get that intersection improvement. That was the intended reason for buying it. My preference would be to move the location, move the house over to Old Ford Park here, some other location, and use it as a nice little historic structure, similar to what we do right now with the other one. If we're not gonna do that, then my choice would be to keep the piece of property, uh, the, the structure on the property. Uh, I think we can pull off intersection improvements with the structure there. If not, uh, again, I wanna move it, because the, the, my goal is the intersection improvement. So, my number one choice for the structure is to, again, move it as a city building, it's a historic structure, the city can maintain it, take care of it, we'll be using it. Um, so that's my preference. So I'll just stop there and let the conversation move forward, and I'll get, engage again, if we, if those don't seem to be the direction that people wanna go, but that's my general feelings on it. Let's do what we intended to do originally.
Good. Commissioner Harvard?
So I was at the public meeting with the citizens, and the overwhelming majority of them said the intersections improvements that we had suggested won't make a difference. There were several milder suggestions made, just with the timing of the light perhaps, with, uh, the crosswalks and all of that, and we still haven't done that to see if that would make an impact on the traffic flow, or the pedestrian traffic flow. Um, so, I'm not convinced that what was presented to us will improve the traffic flow whatsoever. So my position is, is I think that if we own the building, then we need to be utilizing the building in some way or fashion. So, to make, to me, the most common sense would be to relocate it over to Old Ford Park to use the office space. We're constantly cramming people in the existing building next door, cutting it up, you know, to where it's, we're making cubby holes everywhere for staff. Um, we know that we're gonna have to grow with staff in the years to come. Um, we have several positions that we haven't even filled yet, and not sure that there's even office space for them. So to me, to repurpose the building in some form for, for office space, it'd be the most efficient use of that building, and then we would still own the property if, if we came up with a better design for the intersection at some point in time. But if we're not gonna do that, then, you know, uh, I'd say put the property back up for sale, or unless we have a good customer who wants to lease the for sale or unless we have a good customer who wants to lease the property and, you know, and it truly does generate revenue and we're not just donating to some, to some other charity or cause, then that would be the third option. Um, option number four to me is not a consideration whatsoever.
Uh, gentlemen, I've given this a lot of thought of originally when we proposed to move the building to add an extra turn lane to go westbound. Um, I didn't think it was, the, the, in my own mind, cost feasibility and, uh, cost benefit analysis didn't quite match up. Um, you had an adjacent property which we may have to take away that right of way to increase the amount of cars to what approximately two, three, four at the most. So my thoughts from what Ted's had offered us, those different scenarios, were all just expanding a problem at that intersection. They're, they're not alleviating the problem. The residents in that area were vehemently opposed to it. And my own personal thoughts and anecdotal conversations with the Southeast Valugia Historic Society, uh, for that building are that it is not fully a historic building. And this is according to one of their members. And I think if we wanna verify that, we should. Um, though it is a contributing structure to a historic district, which has merit. I could see possibly out of the seven options that Khalid had come forward with, leasing the property, uh, keep the building to convert to city offices. I'm concerned about placing the property up for sale because you may get something you really won't want and it will not be compatible with the rest of the historic neighborhood. So we're kind of in a fix. I, maybe I didn't get the best advice or didn't hear the best advice regarding the moving or buying or selling or destruction of this building to make the intersection better. My immediate thought was this is not going to help. So let's try to make chicken salad from something else. And, uh, I don't think we need to hurry, but, uh, we need to do what's best for the neighborhood and for the traffic in that area. So if the city, if Khalid, if you had any mind for what departments could go over to that, uh, building for city offices, that would be good. I'd like to hear that proposal. And leasing of the property is, you know, revenue generated, which, which is not a bad idea. But I'm afraid that if we get into, uh, reconstructing that intersection, we're just going to spend a lot of money and hopefully not make the matter worse as far as traffic goes. And, and I realize the people on the north end have, they bear the brunt of it, trying to get southbound, um, out of that, uh, intersection. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Um, couple of thoughts to add. So first, I, I made reference back to this a couple of times. We're sixty-nine days away, I think, from, uh, an election. And this isn't a campaign stop, so that's not the point of that. But we do have to acknowledge the reality that at least two of us won't be up here after that, um, for sure. And so I, that is a lens through which we have to view, I think, everything that we talk about today to some extent. Um, so as that applies here to me, if I rewind, we initially, the, the pitch when we bought this was we could potentially use this property to improve the, the traffic flow around that intersection. We didn't have a concrete plan when we bought it. And I said at the time, I don't remember exactly, we could go back and find the footage. But I said at the time, something to the extent of, I normally wouldn't do this. Like, I, I don't like it that we bought it without, like, okay, this is the plan, um, but I liked where we were headed. And we're buying, you know, beachside property in New Smyrna Beach. Felt like it was a decent investment. We'll probably could get our money back out. We could probably put on the market today, get our money back out, maybe even make a little money, which would be a, a once in a lifetime for a city to do. So, um, so I've still remained comfortable with that. We unfortunately, the collective we, this commission and our staff, we, we have not over the past however long since we bought that, we haven't, uh, made the, the case to the public and to this commission that, that built enough consensus around, uh, a concrete solution that we said this would improve traffic and these are the, the exact changes that we would, that we would make and the, you know, get the public buy-in as Commissioner Hartman mentioned. I don't know that we have that from that area. That being said, I, you know, I can, I agree with Vice Mayor. I mean, I do think some of the changes long-term would be looked back on and say, no, it actually did improve flow. But the reality is I don't see any of these items that would be, first, and for the record, I'm completely opposed to item four. Um, that just makes no sense to, to me. Um, I mean, I could, if they were offering to pay for the relocation and maybe even chip in some for the building, you know, maybe we could have a discussion, but I, I just, that just doesn't pass my sanity check at all. So all the rest of them, I, I don't know that you, you know, I would be hesitant to make any of, any commitment for any of these items because I think someone else would have to be following up on it from this seat. And I don't know where they would be on that. And that doesn't mean, we don't shut down business for the next seventy days, but I, I do wanna be mindful of that as I look at long-term planning. So, um, to me, we've, we've waited this long. I would lean towards, uh, we, we continue to work on, this is the concrete plan for improving the intersection and here's the impact that we think it would make with input from traffic experts and see if we can get three people in the DA's at least to, to agree to whatever that looks like. I think it's gonna be that we're shifting the building on the site. But if we can't do that, I think we, we either put it up for sale or, or lease. The, the risk with the sale, as the Vice Mayor said, is then all of a sudden we're perceived as the ones that, you know, allowed something bad to happen on that site if something goes in there that's less than desirable. So perhaps leasing is the way we kind of avoid that and, and maintain control for, you know, this or some future commission to have the option to do something if situations change. So, yeah, that's kinda where I'm at is I, I don't, you know, I don't know that we do anything, make any final decision today, um, because I don't know that any of these can be executed and I don't wanna put staff in a spot where seventy days from now it's, we pull down the for sale sign or we, you know, we stop the relocation or something like that. They're just, uh, uh, so that, that's, that's what I'm struggling with as I sit here today. So I'm happy to hear some feedback on that.
So I guess, I, let me ask you, is what I'm hearing from you saying maybe we just move this on to the next commission?
What, uh, what I'm saying is I think the timing of none, none of these are gonna be done in seventy days.
Right. Well, I, yeah, I agree.
So the next commission's gonna get a chance to opine on anyway.
Yeah. And I do have a concern about making important decisions that we may go forward on that the newly electeds may fall in their lap. So for, there's a number of reasons why I am, I, I do have a concern. We get to a certain point and then there's a majority who wants to back up and go in a different direction. We end up spending money and then we have to eat that, so.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah. So I do have a concern and really just talking to the rest of my commission, um, you know, I would love to go full speed ahead with the original plan. The only issue that I have with maybe not doing it is because I don't, if this, it's gonna take a long time. We can give the approval, but the process takes a very long time. We're gonna be well into a new commission. So again, let me, just, my concern is, is that we go in a different direction and then a new commission may feel differently. And again, we, a lot of time and some money is spent additionally to go in a different direction. So I'm not opposed to waiting until the new commission comes in, but I'm also more eager to push this thing forward with the original intention. So.
And if I had heard four people that were united around one of these, what, I didn't hear that, you know, I mean, so I think that also plays into it is, you know, I think there's always that handoff between commissions and I've, I've never lived through it, but, you know, there's always that handoff. But I think a new commission, I mean, look, there were things that we took, you know, that we ran with that I didn't necessarily support, but they were so far in motion that you just kinda go with. Um, like the, the, the housing, the raising the housing thing and that was, you know, it's a whole different topic. But so, but in this case, I mean, I, I didn't hear that. I mean, I heard every option mentioned. I think four was the only thing, probably universal agreement, we don't wanna do four. But other than that, I heard, I mean, you wanna move forward. I think Randy was kind of not necessarily ready to do that and so.
Well, and I will say this, Dee, I, I could backtrack. I could, I can support moving the structure either on the property or over to Old Fort Park and holding on to the property because I think that regardless, that intersection improvement is gonna be needed sooner or later. And eventually, the people who don't want it are gonna say, oh, maybe we should. Let me stress the bridge. I was in this community and I vividly remember the discussion about the drawbridge. There was a big group of people, especially who lived in the area, who said absolutely no, 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 no high-rise bridge. We want the drawbridge. And now I think a number of those people have conceded as the area has grown so much that that was a little bit of a mistake. So at least taking that position. So I see a very similar situation possibly developing in the future. So let me amend my original suggestion that I think we retain the property, move the structure, one way or the other. I like it going to Old Fort Park as part of a, you know, a historic structure that the city operates out of. Kinda hits the vibe of what we've been doing with this building and City Hall and the area, so.
Yeah. So, obviously, that's also my, would be my first choice. But, and I understand that some of your concerns about with commission changing in the next seventy days or whatever. So, and all of that is gonna take time to get bids for the moving and where we're gonna put it and determine where and utilities, you know, along with the Washington Street construction and all that. So that's gonna be time-consuming. So in the short term, we certainly could lease the property. If we put the property up for lease today and we don't have at least in seventy days, we know that's not a good market. We can scratch that one off the list. You know, if we do one and do it, you know, an annual lease, then a year from now, maybe we'll have a better design for the intersection or a better plan for the, the whole thing with the new commi-, you know, with, with those, the new commission or, you know, just something changes in general, we can have a better plan and move forward at that point in time. Um, you know, we certainly don't have to get into long-term leases, but the building is sitting empty and we're paying utilities on it.
Yeah.
So it, it, you know, it's a money hole right now. Um, if we don't at least to try to either lease the property, you know, we, we don't know what's, what the market's gonna bring. Uh, you may find somebody who wants to do a, a short-term lease as they build a product or, you know, build a business, you know, to move to somewhere else. So that certainly would be a short, a, a short, to me, a short-term fix until after the elections and maybe we take another fresh look at this, at this strategic planning or something along those lines. But those would be my two options, either leasing it now, even leasing it now and then go into the relocation part of it, um, because that's, like I said, gonna take a lot of planning. Um, I don't think we have an idea where we're gonna put it at Old Fort Park just yet. And with, with all the construction that's gonna go on on Washington Street, you know, that may make some difficulties, you know, as we move forward with that. With staging and everything else, so.
Okay. I could certainly support, I mean, it'd be a pretty unique case, I think, to find a commercial lease that would wanna, in light of everything we just talked about, you know, it's not always a short-term lease, but knowing that lease is, you know, probably pretty short-term, it'd be a special case, but you never know until you put it out there, you know, what you might find. And I agree, I mean, right now it's costing us money to sit there, so. Yes, Commissioner Colletti?
When we did have the community meeting out there, our consultant took into, uh, took notes as to what changes the local residents wanted and he promised a revised plan to come back to us. I think that's long overdue. Do we have any idea when we're gonna get this?
Um, I had asked this to the engineer last week and I think he's gonna come back this week, uh, with, with the suggestion that we had at the meeting. So hopefully, I'm, I'm hoping that by the end of this week I'll have some, something that to present to you, probably at the, either the thirteenth meeting or the twenty-seventh.
Okay, I would like you to press for that because this is long overdue. Uh, and we can't really make a logical decision, uh, without it. Might not need to make, uh, a move of the building. I'm firmly against taking a two thousand square foot building and spending four hundred thousand to drag it over a bridge and put it into an open space park. I'm opposed to that. It's kinda where I stand as to whether we put it off for an election or not. I think we should move ahead. I'm up for election. I may win, I may not. Has nothing to do with this decision, one way or the other. And also the money to purchase this, uh, if I'm correct, came out of impact fees and don't affect our budget. And one way or the other, if the building's sold, that money goes back into traffic improvement somewhere. So, uh, I would like us to make some type of decision, uh, not today, but, uh, as soon as possible, once we receive the revised plan or the updated plan, so we can talk intelligently about what really must be done there to use it for a traffic improvement. Thank you.
Just to, to, to clarify, uh, you know, when, when the commission approached staff about this property that it's being available for sale, it's at the intersection, at the time, we didn't know if it's gonna help the improvement with the intersection or not, but it was, you know, it's up for sale, it's, and we did that. Um, that our traffic consultants have presented three options for the improvements and we had several public meetings. Uh, I'm not sure who is going to provide options besides a professional traffic engineer for the improvement of the intersection. So the option that they, that they provided, it didn't seem like it was well-received by the residents in the area. So we, we keep going back in circles and I, you know, then we come back in a year or two and they say, well, we have this and we haven't made the decisions on it. I'm not saying any of these options is a, is a favorable option. But at some point, uh, we know from the traffic, uh, intersection improvement that the consultant has provided, it seems like we might not need anything from the property or we might need maybe something for the sidewalk. So it's not really anything major that we need from the property. Um, to lease the property, which is, it's a possible, but I'm not sure who would lease the property for a short term, knowing that they might be coming back in six months or a year to sell the property. But we'll put it out, whatever the commission chooses to do. I mean, to put it out just to see what the market for leasing will do that. But I just wanna make sure that we have presented three options for the improvements and it wasn't well-received by the residents. I know they made some other suggestions, which he's working on now, but I'm not sure the suggestions that we will made that will make, they might make some significant improvement, but I don't think it's gonna be that improvement that they're looking for. It's such a tight intersection, it's a busy area during weekends and holidays and, and that's the condition for it. So unless if I, I add another, another road or another, uh, connection to the beach, uh, it's, it's really, it's a difficult, it's a difficult problem to deal with from the traffic engineering standpoint at this point, so.
So one, one option as I sit here thinking and then we, we gotta, hopefully, we got more items to get to, so. If we, if we went to, if we put the property up, e- everything else on here is, is gonna take some skin, some significant time in engineering. Uh, and, and what's not on here in many of these cases, relocating the building, um, you know, all of these other options that involve also doing other intersection improvements. So there's, again, a whole process that has to be followed with that, building public support, having the public understand it. Um, you know, so if that's, if that's the route we go, combined with any kind of relocation, if that's required, that's a time-consuming process. So I, I'm sitting here wondering, I think we could probably safely put the property on the market to lease for up to two years. That would give us plenty of time to have everything ready to go, approved, engineered, et cetera. There's nothing stopping us from, us or the future commission from doing that during that two-year process. So that way you do have a little bit longer-term lease to offer in the market, which I think could be desirable to someone, as Commissioner Hartman said, to start or build a business or, or to, you know, expand their current one, whatever that case may be. Then we. Um, then we have the ability to do planning throughout that two-year process and come to resolution of, of what we need to do. So the minute that expired, you know, they could pull the trigger. And I think we could also craft the lease in such a way to say if it were just going to be some minor improvements in kind of right-of-way areas, as you just mentioned, there wouldn't be anything stopping us from doing that while the lease would even trans-, you know, be in effect. Uh, that could even be accelerated if that would be some of the other shorter-term solutions or more immediate solutions that could be pursued. So, you know, that, that doesn't, that doesn't take any of these options off the table, but it does kind of solve this immediacy need. Because I, my prediction is, this is, I mean, you, you've heard it here today, the, the five of us, and we're not, we're not coalescing around any one of these. You've heard strong opposition to moving, you've heard support of, of moving. Um, so, you know, I, I think it's going to, I think it's going to take some time to build the community support, to take the solutions that were offered, build some community support for those, or maybe it doesn't materialize. And if not, then, you know, I, I don't know, that's where, again, we're, we're not going to solve that in seventy days, so. So that's my suggestion, that I, I think we, we go for a lease, but which doesn't tie our hands, and we do that with a, offering a two-year term.
And I think that's.
It's just one option.
I think that's, that's, I think that's, uh, that's workable, Mayor. I think if we have a limit on the lease for two years, I think it'd be something. If somebody wants to lease the building, I think two years is, is a, is a good thing. So, well, as long as we have some directions from the.
Yeah, let me, let me get, let me get them.
You know, that's.
I just threw that out. So what, what's everybody's thoughts on that?
We clearly have no direction, so that's the best back I've got. We have, we're, we're all over the place, so that's, I'm good with that.
Yeah, because, I mean, i- if, if in that period of time we determined that we don't need the property or whatever, that person may want to purchase the property.
You can always put it up for sale even while it's leased.
Yeah, they've established a business there.
Hundred percent.
I mean, it gives opportunities for people to, you know, start a business over on Flagler.
And it doesn't stop us from, us, the city, uh, from pursuing any of these other options.
No, yeah.
I mean, we, we retain control of the property and can make a true long-term plan and put the time in needed to do that. Any strong opposition to that over here, that we're, something we're missing?
I, I would, uh, I would go for a one-year lease with an option to renew it or a lease with an option to buy either one.
Okay. Anything to add?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, leasing is not a bad option. It's one of the ones I recommend.
Yep.
Um, just a question for Collet. The, uh, if we were to decide to convert to city offices, have you given any thought to which offices might want to relocate there?
Right now, the only city offices, if it remains on the beat side, uh, I think it's for the parking enforcement. So currently, it's being used by the city clerk's office for a store, but it's, as far as other city operations, I have discussed with the chief in terms of having like a substation. But the thing is, if you have a substation, it has to be manned. And right now, we don't have the manpower to have somebody there. I mean, we, we want them on the street. But, uh, it will be the best for the parking ambassadors if we wanted to have the city offices.
That's expensive city, city offices. I mean, so. Uh, okay, I think I heard agreement. We can debate when you bring it back how we exactly structure it. I'm open to one year with the renewal. I mean, that's pretty common, as long as it's a guaranteed renewal. Again, I just, one year's going to be tough. I'm not a commercial real estate agent, but I think the market shrinks the shorter term that lease is in the commercial space. So I'd like to see us, two years, I think is the sweet spot. All right. Uh, next item up, the Francis Avenue properties. Collet.
Um, yes, sir. Um, as you recall, um, the Habitat presented to you, uh, I guess at one of the last city commission meeting or the one before that, uh, this is when we were discussing the properties available to be donated to Habitat. Uh, in the meantime, we discussed the seven oh six and seven oh eight Francis, and, and we wanted to, uh, remain as open space, park, whatever you want to call it. And then, so we removed those properties out of the list. I have met with, uh, the executive director of Habitat and one of the board members uh, last week to discuss about their twenty-five thousand dollars donation. Um, it is specifically for this property. Uh, whatever the, the, what I mentioned to them, uh, we have to go back and have a meeting with the, with the residents within Francis Avenue to see how they would like to have this twenty-five thousand dollars being spent on the property. They have mentioned they could do a small playground, they could do a picnic shelter with some picnic tables, like a gazebo type of thing. Um, but only twenty-five thousand dollars. There is no strength attached to this twenty-five thousand dollars. So it's not like, you know, they, they put the twenty-five thousand dollars and they want to come back and say, hey, we spent twenty-five thousand dollars on the property, we want it back. So this is just for them to be a good neighbor and participate in the community by providing the twenty-five thousand dollars. But I think our first step, if that's what we want to do, is to really have a public meeting with the property owners on Francis to see what they would like to see on that, on that piece of property, on the two lots, so.
Okay. Uh, in, in all cases, just for clarity, the city retains control. We're not, Habitat doesn't take control of the property. City retains control of the property.
It's city-owned property. Habitat has no control whatsoever, uh, so, and, and would even, uh, if that would be the case right now, I think some of the property owners along Francis, they maintain the property. I would have our city, uh, workers maintain it as well.
Okay. Um, last thing for clarity real quick, and then we'll kick off the discussion. Um, I, I know that the perception was, and there were some comments made decades ago, I believe it was, by another commission to set up here, similar to what we have done, where several of us have commented, hey, we'd love to see that be a park. Those comments were made decades ago, but staff could not find any record of this being earmarked designated, turned into any official motion or thing making this a park.
Yeah, it was discussion that they wanted to have it as a park, but it's never been designated as a park on our record, so. Um, but that's, I mean, that, that could be done if that's what.
It's bygones. I just want to be, I just want to be very clear. So that's, that's then, and basically, it's something similar to what has happened now. So a few of us have said, hey, we'd love to see that be a park, but if we don't take any action, if we just walked away today and never took any action, it didn't officially become a park just because a few people sitting up here said, we'd love to see it be a park. So that's kind of where the, that commission, whenever it was, decades ago, that's kind of what they got to and then never came back to it. But I think we're going to try to put this to bed once and for all as a commission, uh, hopefully, so. Um, all right, gentlemen, thoughts on the item? Commissioner Clodie.
Uh, at present, obviously, we own the land. We have been mowing the grass on it and doing, from what I understand, superficial maintenance of it. It's been done by our maintenance staff, what I would like to see. Uh, after a community meeting, to make sure that the majority agree with what we should do with it, that it retain, uh, be retained by the city as open space, not necessarily a developed park, but the maintenance schedule be altered. So instead of our in-house staff doing it, it'd be part of the Yellowstone contract. So we get contracted maintenance services on a very regular basis, uh, such as our, our other public spaces that we have. That's where I stand.
Okay, any other comments?
You know, I think it needs to be left as green space, just open space. I mean, we've talked about that for months up here before with other developments. There's just not enough open space. But certainly, as the lady presented, um, you know, a gazebo or benches or shade cloth or something like that, I think certainly would be something minimal that we could do on that property. Um, they claim that they've been mowing it. Commissioner Clodie's now saying that we've mowed it. I don't, I'm not in favor of all contracting that with Yellowstone, um, because that's just going to drive those costs up. Um, so if it's truly going to be a residential green space for the residents, um, we can add it to city staffs, but they need to be mindful that, uh, we, staff is already mowing a lot of other green space already, so they may need to jump in there once a, once a month or something and kind of help out. We certainly would appreciate it, so.
All right, I'll throw my two cents in. Um, so I think we're all heading in the same direction. I think there's a general consensus on the commission, um, officially make this some sort of open space park. My thoughts, um, I want, I want it to stay in open space. I have young kids, there's nowhere to put up soccer goals, there's no way to play football, you know, tackle football as we did as kids. Um, so I want to keep it as much a green space, open as possible, for allow basically a field that kids can go to and run around in. We have a tendency to put structures that don't get used. Um, if Habitat wants to put in the money to help make improvements, I think that's great. I think it's my personal preference that the city retain the property and not convey it to Habitat, but that is a discussion that I'm going to step back from and let, you know, the, the rest of the stakeholders kind of move in a direction that they, uh, prefer. Uh, in terms of shade structures and structures, here's my concern. You create structure and shade, you know what you're going to get. And we have no way to remove people from the property. So we have, as a community, added shade structure and benches to various parts of the community on city property, and we have a problem. They're not being used by the residents, they're being used by the homeless who come and congregate there and sleep there. So, um, I want to be very careful what we think sounds like a great idea. And again, I think the residents should let us know how far they want to go to let us develop it and what they want or what they don't want. Thank you, that's it.
I don't think I heard you speak on this one, you go ahead.
Uh, to me, it's a no-brainer. Uh, the open space, the green space, uh, has innumerable benefits to the city and, uh, the residents. I don't live in that area, but they expect it to be a park. Uh, they've used it as a park. Um, I would like them to have substantive, uh, conversations with Habitat if they want improvements. Um, I'm not necessarily in support of improvements, although a couple of park benches wouldn't hurt. Um, but I, I think it's a good precedent that the city sets in, in declaring this space, um, open green space. It's very healthy for the community. That's all I have.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, what I've heard, first of all, I think it's very honorable and gen-, and generous and shouldn't be overlooked or taken lightly that, you know, Habitat came back to the city. Um, you know, that they were, they were here trying to, uh, complete their mission, execute their mission, uh, and, you know, had some, some things even said about their organization and, you know, some of the people they serve, which were, were, were not, you know, not necessarily even true. Um, but e- even in the face of that, in light of that, they recognized the concerns of the citizens of that neighborhood and came back and offered, uh, this money, not to buy the property, not to take control of the property, um, just to help improve and, and benefit the neighborhood, because that is truly what I think their mission is. So, uh, I, I don't take that lightly, and I certainly applaud them and their board for, for making that generous offer. That being said, I, I, the more I have thought about this, the more I tend to agree, I believe, with, with Vice Mayor. You know, what I heard from the, the residents of Francis was, in no uncertain terms, kind of just leave us alone. Like, just leave what it is. It was working, but we broke, it happened. And my worry is, any action we take almost could have negative side effects. And, um, one of those definitely was structures come two things. I always look at, you know, long-term cost of maintenance. You know, now it's one more thing we've got to maintain, one more thing we've got to add to the, to the city, you know, maintenance log, um, for after hurricanes or whatever. And it doesn't matter what we build out of, wood, metal, uh, anything. We, we live near the ocean, so they, they all, you know, decay at a pretty fast rate. So, um, so I, I, I would be in favor of, you know, I, I would, I'd like to see the, the Habitat be able to partner with us on this in some limited capacity, if, if they're willing. Maybe that's a general cleanup, you know, getting it to a, a set state. Maybe there is a small investment strategically, um, you know, but again, I don't want to do something that, that invites elements that were, you know, that, that aren't an issue maybe in the neighborhood right now. So I want to be very careful about that, have citizen buy-in from that area on that, um, and figure out how we move, we move forward. Um, and, and I'll defer to staff on, uh, you know, what the designation is. There was a question on the two lots. You mentioned seven oh six and seven oh eight. This is a two lot, but everything we're talking about is, we're, we're talking about them really as one. And, and so what we do for one, we do for the other. Is that the intention?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. So, so we're talking about both lots really, even though they are two distinct lots. Um, so, yeah, so I, I defer to staff as far as did, you know, what the formal designation process is. Um, I could, I can support that. Um, and then I think just work with the citizens in that, in that area and get, get their input on the structures. But I would just caution and be careful on it. And, you know, it's a conversation I can have also with the Habitat folks and explain. It's an extremely generous offer, and there's certainly other places we might could use it. We can use some of it here maybe, but I don't know that we, I don't want to see us do a ton of things there and then, and, you know. So that, that's my thought.
Okay, so just to be clear, this, um, this is what I will do. I will, uh, probably, uh, sometime after the budgets, we will have a public meeting with Habitat and the property owners on Francis. If they, the property owners, the majority of them, they would like to keep it open space, then that would be an open space. We will come back to the commission with some type of resolution.
Yep.
That this would remain as an open space forever. This way, the issue is resolved once and for all.
Okay.
If they decide that they wanted to do some type of park amendment or whatever, we will discuss that. If that's what they want to do, I'm talking about the property owners, we will come back to the commission with some type of, a minor design that this is what they want to do, and then we'll come back with, uh, as far as maintenance and, and other issues related to the.
Okay.
To the property.
Yeah, the, the last thing I was going to say, I don't remember who said it, but, uh, I, I tend to agree. I think it's Commissioner Hartman. Um, again, whatever we're doing now has kind of been working. I didn't, I didn't hear people complaining about what we've been doing now. So I, I, we maintain a ton of turf. And two issues with that, number one is it costs a ton of money to maintain turf. Number two is turf is the least ecologically sensitive thing that we could possibly use. So I, I, I wouldn't want to see us bite off any more of that or double down on that. I would like to see it be what it is or, you know, so that's kind of my thoughts on that. I, I don't want to see us moving towards contracting that or even signing staff up. I mean, to me, we're doing this, it's, it's, it's a pretty, uh, it's a micro park, if you will, in a very specific area. If those folks are already kind of responsible for that and maintaining it, then, you know, anyway, I, I'll let you all figure that out. But I don't want to see us signing up for that, for too much maintenance on that.
Thank you.
All right. That is the Francis Avenue item. So next steps are going to be a public meeting. Um, I think it'd be really cool if we had that at that park. I don't know if that creates challenges. We have to be ADA compliant, all that stuff, but it'd be kind of cool to just have it out there in the neighborhood, make it the easiest for them to come, uh, but we'll, we'll let you all figure that out. So a public meeting, and then we'll put, we'll, we'll put a plan in place from there. Uh, all right, next item, discussion of leased parking for the Flagler Avenue businesses.
Um, you had a, a presentation by the Assistant City Manager, but before you start, I just want to kick it off, uh, just to kind of give you some background history on this specific, uh, item. When the area was established originally in the nineteen eighty-three, eighty-five, um, to promote economic development, they came up with this, uh, a lease parking for some of these businesses. So basically, what happened is we have, uh, a couple of public parking areas. So, uh, if the business have to provide, say, ten parking spaces and they only have seven, they could pay to the, to the fund, uh, for three parking spaces. And Ron will go over some of these properties that they've been paying these, uh, lease parking fees uh, since nineteen eighty-five, when, when it was established. Now, um, looking at the two proper, two areas, in particular, on Flagler, on, on Canal, whether we like it or not, we have a parking issue. So there is two more, two notions to, to the parking issues. We will have some, some people who will tell us, if you build parking, then they're going to come and you're going to create some more problems. And then the other notion is, you have a problem, you have a parking issues, and you haven't done anything on it. So, uh, what you're going to see in the, uh, in the presentation is. So what you're gonna see in the presentation is what is the current program and then some ideas that we might have for the future. So Ron?
Thank you. Good morning. As Khalid indicated, the Community Redevelopment Agency was established back in 1985 that covered the Flagler Avenue Business District. The CRA district was created to allow for the incremental tax dollars to be used for street skate projects like the Canal Street, Flagler Avenue projects. These street skates projects include better sidewalks, the installation of streets trees, updated utilities, signage lighting, and updated street parking. The CRA sunsetted in the year of 2015. And that shows you where the old CRA boundaries were at for that 20-year period.
Ron, point the mic towards you.
Yeah, sure. I'm sorry.
That's right. Thank you.
An example of the program established by the CRA was to bring better commercial opportunities to the Flagler Avenue District. What we did was created the parking lease program. The lease program allowed for proposed businesses or current future businesses that wanted to expand the ability to provide parking where they could not provide the required onsite parking. It allowed them to lease parking spots from the city that were located in one of the CRA public parking lots. The lease price per parking lot is $150 per year. Currently, the city has 88 leased parking spaces in the Flagler Avenue area, which brings in approximately $13,900. That money currently goes into the general fund and not into the parking fund.
That's yearly, correct?
Yes, sir. The current lease program has worked well. However, Flagler Avenue is Flagler Avenue. It's very popular. And the time changes. The program may be outdated. There's been some consideration about changing it since the businesses may have outgrown the program. To date, we have no vacant city-owned parcels that would be available for additional leases. So we are currently maxed out with the 88. An updated and new program could be created that would be fair to all businesses located on or just off the Flagler Avenue area. The Canal Street Business District could also be included in any new or revised parking programs that we would initiate. The Finance Department has indicated that the current leases that are in place have not been updated since 2009. Some of the businesses have changed ownership, and some of these leases may not be enforceable since the leases were in place with past businesses and just transferred over to the new tenants or owners. Some of the leases may also be in default. Possible solutions, keep the current program in place and require a business that participates in the current parking lease program to complete new leases. Let's keep the current leases that we have in place. Let's update them, bring them up to current trends and then obviously move forward. Another option would be to cancel the current parking lease program, create a new parking lease program. A new program could be open to all eligible businesses that could not provide 100% of the required parking onsite to pay into an existing parking lease fund. This option, as a problem, would create non-conforming uses since existing city public parking spaces would not back up the lease parking. Case in point, a restaurant is leasing 20 spaces that they are utilizing to meet their regulatory obligation. If we were to take away that allocation from them and their direct lease, they would not have any designated spaces for them. Therefore, they would then become a non-conforming use since they do not have any specific designated parking for their business. So that's, in terms of eliminating their current fund, that would create a non-conforming use problem with those businesses that currently have leases. Another option moving forward, obviously, would be create a special-serving taxing district to create a parking fund. This would be a self-imposed tax fund that the owners of the properties within the district could vote to assess themselves an additional ad valorem tax as an ad valorem assessment. This would be a cooperative public-private venture between the city. We could utilize our current parking revenues. Right now, we have $3.7 million in the parking fund, and we bring in annual revenues of $1.2 million to that. So it could be a joint effort between the taxing owners, property owners within the district, and the city in terms of developing additional project. Another option to develop revenues or control parking would be to install parking meters or a kiosk system on the city's street public parking and in the public parking lots in concert with the city's current parking revenue programs. All of these options could be used for updating or expand current parking lots, purchase additional properties for future parking lots, create parking lots, create parking structures, or improve on-street parking spots in concert with the city's current parking fund revenue. As an example, let's say we were to build a parking structure to cost $9 million. Now, this is the case where we would do the joint venture with the special service area and our city's parking fund. So let's say we build a structure of $9 million. The special service taxing district would cover half of the annual payment on that, and that cost of the city's parking fund would cover the remaining half. Bonds could be issued to support the construction of the project and would be paid for with a joint approach with the two designated revenue streams. An estimated monthly payment over 20 years would be $54,000 or $648,000 years to cover the amortization of that $9 million bond. The city parking fund and the special-serving taxing district fund would cover the payments of that bond. Questions? Discussion? Lay out a big, bold plan and then let's talk about it.
Go back a couple slides here to how much we take in now through our district.
I didn't have it on the slide. I just provided that revenue. We have three points.
I thought I read it.
The 13, 9. Oh, it's like the first or second slide.
$13,000?
Yeah, it was 13.
$13,900.
One more.
There it is, $13,900.
I was getting a little... Okay. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
I'm gonna shoot. I've been...
Well, the immediate question is, which was brought up by Commission concern at a previous meeting, was to address the leases. So I think, why don't we take the easier and address the lease issue?
So I think what's in place now has morphed since 1985 and evolved into an utter disaster. It's a nightmare. No one understands it. It seems to be unfair. It's perceived as unfair. It was all very well-intended, but it is a nightmare. So I think we get rid of the whole archaic concept that was created during the 1985 CRA time period and scratch all that. I highly recommend that. I am behind that 100%. Now, once we get past that, what do we do? You mentioned a non-conforming use. It's only a non-conforming use based on our existing regulations. We can create new regulations so it doesn't become a non-conforming use. The, what I would like to see happen is, conceptually, big picture, not trying to narrow down the absolute details right now, but I'm more than happy to follow up with that. Scratch everything, start over. Every business pays into some sort of fund that generates the money to deal with the parking problem. Acquire, whether it's build a parking garage or some way, a trolley or some sort of, we have to build a fund before we can come up with any real, true solutions. So that's where I want to go, and every property owner should put into that because every property owner is gonna benefit, and it should be proportionate to what you use. If I have an accounting office with a staff of three people, that's gonna be a lot different than a restaurant that has, you know, who's gonna use 20, 30, 40, 50 parking spaces. So that's the direction. Scratch what we have. It's ridiculous. Unfair, misunderstood, not understood. And move forward with some sort of district. Now, I will say this. The money needs to be specifically earmarked for a specific parking-related issues. Don't want to, well, we're generating this money and then this happens, so we're gonna put the money over here because it's kind of related. I don't want to do any of that unless we get so flush of money, we have no idea what to do with it.
To answer your question, the special service fund, which would be done by ordinance and by a vote of the property owners, would be by law designated only for parking uses.
Yeah, I like it. Off for moving forward in that direction.
Yeah, going back to where I originally started, I agree completely that we gotta scrap what we have now. It makes no sense. Generally accepted, it's $25,000 to build a parking space. At the rate we're collecting now, it only takes 166 years to generate that amount of money. So we're giving away a benefit to certain specific individuals. Part of that money was paid by one person for many years. He didn't even have a building. He just had a lot. So dedicated fund is the way to go. It can be allocated based upon square footage, whatever revenues are. We also have to take into account that we have to change our zoning regarding required parking spaces for new use. We just have a new use open up, about 150 seats restaurant. They didn't provide any parking. So the basis of what was put in by a previous commission during very bad economic times was good then. It is not good now. Lack of parking will strangle that area of town. So there'll be no more growth. So gotta do something. Dedicated parking district is fine by me.
So I agree. I think what we currently have isn't working, especially they haven't been paying and they owe. We've not been collecting. That seems to be a problem for me. But if you, you know, you talk about parking garages, where are you gonna build them? That's gonna be the problem. I think that's gonna be the bigger conversation is, is it gonna be off-site and provide shuttle service or is it? Because I don't think you're gonna build it on Flagler. Others have tried. Private enterprises tried. And I don't think, you know, there's the space over there to do anything that's gonna be worthwhile. But I agree. What we currently have isn't working. Like Commissioner Kalodi said, you know, somebody owns a vacant lot and they're paying into the parking fund, they're tying up those spaces, and they have no intent on using them, but they've tied them up for other businesses and stuff. So I support going forward with something. I like the idea of a public-private partnership and the businesses and just how we get there and what that ends up looking like will be interesting.
Yes. Thoughts?
Yeah, just a few thoughts. You know, we have these two discussion items, the lease parking for Flagler Avenue Business and the parking district. And I think these items are encompassing and very tedious. And my thoughts lately are are the residents paying for the sins of the fathers of the city who couldn't deal with parking issues 10, 20, 30 years ago. And now we have to revisit parking. I hope we don't go in the direction of allowing this parking district, this overlay, if we're still considering an overlay, to give an advantage to larger venues and take away the opportunity for parking for smaller mom-and-pop venues. So there's so many facets to our parking problem. And I don't think parking garages are going to fix it. The city's just gonna continue to grow with visitation, aside from the people that live here and want to use Flagler and Canal, those shopping and entertainment districts. So, boy, we've got a lot of thinking to do for the remainder of this commission's term, and I think it's gonna be a problem going forward unless somebody comes up with a city-led initiative or private-public partnership for parking in some area. But, gosh, we've discussed trolleys and parking garages now. For as long as I've been sitting here, we've really come to no conclusion. We haven't had the opportunity to buy too many public surface spaces for parking as well. So where do we go? Where do we go? I can't answer that.
And some that we did, we passed on. Which we're gonna deal with on the next agenda item. Can you go forward a couple of slides? You had a, I want to go back to the one about the taxes, yeah, possible solutions. So a couple of thoughts on this. So the... Here's what I think needs to happen. I'll just put it this way. I think staff and leaders in the community, representatives of Chamber, Faba, Canal Street, business owners, residents. I think you've gotta go out to other communities that have gone through this process, that had a downtown district that was, had site constraints, had limited availability of parking, and bring all of that feedback back to New Smyrna Beach. Coco's done it. St. Augustine's done it. I'm not trying to be either of those cities. I'm just saying that we can learn some lessons from them. We can figure out what worked, what didn't work. I agree the current model is broken. I guess my question maybe for my colleagues is, you know, I don't necessarily know that we change that before we have something new to put on the table. To me, a couple of options that I haven't heard talk about, you know, that I think would be options, would be, you know, could we do a a taxing district that's like a tourism tax or a bed tax type system where it's highly localized? So taxes are generated in a certain area on tourism-type spend is allocated to solving some of the problems that that kind of impact brings with it. I mean, that's the, so that's the notion of a user fee or a user tax. And again, applied in many other places. One of the challenges that we have, we as a community have, not we as the five people sitting up here, but we as a community have, is that Khalid and Ron said it best, said it well. And it's what I've seen. If you talk to the average, if I polled everybody in this room, I guarantee I could get about a 50-50 response on whether or not we need more parking or we need to do, you know, nothing. There's many people that believe if you build it, they will come. I subscribe to that in some cases. And there's many people that believe, hey, it's not getting any better. We probably should do, we probably should do something. The people are coming whether we like it or not. So, you know, you talk about some of these options. Go to the next slide. Talking about parking meters and kiosks for street public parking. This should have been done years ago. I brought this up when I first got elected four years ago. And there was a bunch of business owners on Flagler that spread complete misinformation about the whole process. And so we made no progress on this. And it's stupid. And so instead, we have city resources that are spent responding to people, business owners on Flagler taking pictures of their neighboring business owner who parks in front of their shop and takes up their parking spot all day and spends all day running out to their car, moving it four inches so that they don't get a parking ticket. So instead of actually solving the problem, we just stay mired in high school drama. And so I think we have to be more mature as a city and a community and talk about this and not get lost in conspiracy theories and, you know, all that kind of stuff. And actually talk about what are the pros and cons of parking meters and kiosks? You know, what does that do for the businesses? What has it done in other communities? And I think I'll challenge my staff and, because again, this isn't gonna happen the next 70 days. So I'm really just kind of speaking to you all as friends at this point. I think that we, as a city, have to do a better job of taking a leadership position on this. I know we get burned sometimes on that because when it doesn't go well, it's like, well, you were advocating for this. But I think we, as a city, have to do a little bit better job of taking a leadership position and saying, look, we've gone out, here is a solution. We've put a solution on the table that would work. It doesn't come completely without any cons, but here is a solution that would work, a multifaceted, not just one of these. I don't think we can just piecemeal this together because all that gets attacked as we go. But if we take and do a comprehensive, this is, take this whole district, here's the overlay. We did, put this investment here, make this change here, do a tax here, change this, do the whole thing, working... the whole thing, working with the, the business community and challenging them to also, and I've had the same conversation with Chamber leaders, they also have to do more. It's not enough to just occasionally show up to a meeting and, and, and chime in on the one or two items we're discussing. They also have to be part of that process of going out and doing the due diligence and trying to help us, for them, solve this problem. I don't wanna lay the burden completely on the residents' feet. I mean, I live, I live out west. I don't, I don't, I don't know that I want my tax dollars subsidizing too much public parking in the beachside. I'm, you know, chip in a little bit, but it should be a public-private partnership. Everyone should, should pay their fair share, but certainly the businesses who benefit the most should pay their fair share. This shouldn't be done thoroughly on the backs of taxpayers alone, but it does have to be a partnership. So, the challenge I see is that we, we continue to, to present the problem, but we're not coalescing around a solution, it's cause nobody's really presenting solutions, we're just presenting the problem. And I don't think, you, you're not gonna get five people that sit up here, this or the next five or the, the 25 after us. It's very tough to sit up here without being able to just kinda huddle up and, and talk and work through this like you would in the typical business setting. It's very hard, and, and also with the, you know, we're always kind of on an agenda or time constraint, we got more to talk about than we ever have time for. It's, it's very hard to coalesce around solutions or even ideate and come up with solutions and really beat those up in the right way, I think. And, and then, we do that, and then we subject that to public, you know, and then that gets beaten up further. That has to all happen before it gets to here. That has to happen, and then this PowerPoint has to be, here's the proposed solution, I've got leaders from Faba standing next to him, Canal Street standing next to him, some residents that have, that have, you know, chimed in, and it's presented as, here's a comprehensive solution, here's the pros and the cons, and here's the steps you need to execute if you wanna follow this. And if not, then let's stop talking about parking. Let's just, it is what it is. That's, that's kinda my, my view on this.
If, if I can offer some consensus direction for the staff, one, would the commission be agreeable to extending the current program one additional year from this October the 1st to give us time to do the next two steps? One, to address the vice mayor's concerns, addressing some modifications to the parking regulatory issues to coincide with any future plans that we might designate in terms of moving forward with an overall parking plan over the next year.
Yeah, just addressing that issue, I'm, I'm fine for extending it another year, but we should raise the rate to $500 per space. Because it's obvious this money doesn't really matter to us in the overall picture. I spent two years attending Faba meetings, that was my district at the time, and I really didn't get a lot of backing from any of them on parking issues. Biggest request I ever got from them was if I would participate in the dunk tank. That was it. I think I raised money for, for Faba, but not to solve the parking problem.
All right. So, quick, quick comments. This issue has been discussed, I don't know how many years, but I could tell you this. In 2012, City Commission created a, a parking task force, that I had the honor and the pleasure of working with them. And to talk about bringing back what other communities have done, we brought it back. We even brought a parking garage experts to this area, looked at several locations. They looked at one specific location. I went and I approached the church to see if we could do a public-private partnership. That did not materialize because the church was not interested at the time. So, this issue comes back, and then you mentioned about that we should be going to the businesses first and then come into the commission. We tried that one time, and we get nailed because the commission was not in favor of doing that to go to the businesses. So, the issue's been out for so long that it just, we wanted to do something. Obviously, we looked at the trolley, the trolley wasn't even, before even it materialized, it got kicked down quickly because of the residents on the beach side and, and specifically not liking the, the trolley being there, even though the size of the trolley could be, you know, whatever size you want. The thing is, we have to address the issue from the source. And, and what I mean by that, it's, it's, you have a problem, I gotta, I gotta find out the source and, and attack the source and then come up with a solution. So, we know what the source is. The source is people coming to the city of New Smyrna Beach, they like the city of New Smyrna Beach. Whether I like it or not, they're gonna be coming. And the issue is they're impacting the beach side and they're impacting the residents, and then they're impacting even the business owners themselves. As you said on, in, in your, just a minute ago, with emails we receive from business owners where they're taking pictures of other business owners parking in these spots. The, the parking kiosks that you see in the, that came as a result of the parking task force. The parking enforcement came as of the parking task force. I mean, we, we try to do a lot of stuff, but the thing is, if we don't have a clear direction, that's sometimes what happens, is we don't get a clear direction, no consensus.
Yeah.
And then it seems like the issue would just go away for a minute, and then it comes back, well, you haven't done anything. So, thank you.
I'm in favor for getting rid of this existing system right now. My, one of my, my question to you is, what about the people who have, for lack of a better word, own these parking spaces and been paying into it? I get the feeling from some of them that they feel like this is a commodity.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Some of these people who've been paying into these parking spaces for years feel like they have some sort of commodity. It's one of the problems with the system, it has taken on that tone. I wanna get rid of this system now. It's only gonna get worse. If we raise the price, and I get where you're going because, you know, we're not, 14,000 a year is insignificant, but I think we're taking a step backwards in create and, and increasing the amount until we come to a decision. The system needs to get rid of now, it should've been gotten rid of years ago. I don't wanna possibly exacerbate the system of keeping it around for another year because we're just gonna kick this can down the road if we don't start making decisions. And when you pay more into it, the people who own these parking spaces, they're all gonna come piling in here saying, you're taking away an, an asset that I had, and it's now more like a commodity. So, I just think that's going in the wrong direction. It's a bad system, we know it's bad, let's shut it down. That will be, it may make us more inclined to come up with a new solution quicker. Analysis paralysis. We all sit up here and we can't make a decision, but we wanna analyze everything. We want the public input. But at some point, input becomes self-destructive because everybody wants to accommodate everybody. We're not gonna make a single decision up here, even ones that are not controversial, that everyone's gonna be happy about. And we continue the same problems year after year, decade after decade because we're not willing to make bold decisions, and at what point does bringing in the citizens become too much? Analysis paralysis, analysis paralysis. Listen, let's start making decisions. And we start by just getting rid of this crazy parking system that we have in place on Flagler right now, and let's just start moving forward. We have had input from everybody under the sun for a couple decades. Are we just gonna continue to do the same thing over and over?
Yeah, I mean, one of the challenges is that I've seen up here in my four years is that it's, it's much easier to oppose something than it is to advocate for. You, you're, you're much more inclined to have the chamber fill up when you put a possible solution on the table, when you propose making a change to the status quo, that's when people show up and that's when commissions tend to get a little reluctant to, to move forward. But it, doing nothing is, is absolutely the easiest path because the, the chamber, I've never seen the chamber fill up with people that are just here demanding action. They're usually here demanding you don't do something that is on the, that has been proposed to be done. So, I, I think that's, that's part of the, the paralysis. I mean, every, almost everything up here, I started four years ago having the same conversation. Staff told me that, hey, we've, and we've been down this road, like, we, we kinda know where this is gonna end, but we're, let's, here we go again, you know, saddle up. So, we, we revisited the parking task force, we, and I, and I hear you, I mean, the whole, my, I don't want more input, cause I agree, it's not that I, I'm not afraid of input, I always seek input. I'm just saying, we've got the input on this. I'm not saying we, we necessarily need to just keep getting more input. I think we need to get buy-in, and that's the difference, is it's not just, I don't need you to share your opinion, because again, then that devolves to a, everyone finding a possible problem with the solution put on the table. That's the easiest thing in the world to do, is find problems with proposed solutions. It's, it's kinda my favorite task, honestly, but it's so easy, it's so easy. The hard thing to do is to coalesce around a proposed solution and defend a proposed solution and, and, and figure out how to make something actually work. That's actually hard work, that's actually the job of us and staff and, and others. So, I, I think the, the challenge is, how do we as a city come together, start building buy-in for some of these things? And, and, you know, again, that's, that's where it can't be, you know, I, I take the parking meters, I, I, you know, I felt like I was on an island on that, not just from you all, I'm saying like, there were no other business leaders on Flagler that were helping advocate with me on that. I felt like I was under attack for proposing these parking meters. Like, it suddenly was just, you know, literally it felt like everyone else backed away, and I was like, oh yeah, no, this is all Russ's big idea. That's fine, I don't, I still defend it, it still makes complete logical sense to me that to not have free parking all the way up and down in front of our business owners. We should be, anyway, so that's a, so yeah, it's not that we just need to continue to analyze, I think we just have to start building consensus. And to me, to build consensus, you have to have a well-vetted solution that has been proven to work and get some buy-in from at least three people that are willing to stand behind it, even when the chamber fills up. Because again, the only people to show up, show up to oppose. It's very, very hard to get the people to show up to stand up here and say, I fully support this, I hope you vote yes. I, that's just the least common words that are ever spoken right there in anything we ever talk about, so.
You're absolutely right.
I, I don't have a problem, I, I mean, I guess my only question for staff would be, are you all concerned, I mean, we're not taking any official actions today, it's just a workshop, but between now and the next one, this, this notion of Commissioner McGurk, I could agree with that, but does that, does that cause any problems or heartburn for, for any of you all, staff leaders? Is there anything that we unwind or any potential blowback from just doing?
I think the only issue is that the leases become due October 1st.
Yeah, it's the time.
Okay. So, I mean, I think we could, we'll see if we get one other person agrees to just bring that back and we can talk about that. Either way, I don't agree with raising the right, the, the rate, so, Commissioner Colletti.
One thing that we do make sure of is when some uses were approved in the past, they might've been tied into requiring them to have these dedicated spaces. So, we'll have to do some research into that, if there's any planning board approvals that included the need to have those, to meet their parking requirements.
Yeah.
I would, I would hate to do something like that, that'd hang out of business. As to moving ahead, Mr. Mayor.
We need to make sure we're not negatively impacting the business.
Correct. Absolutely.
As, as the vice mayor indicated, it might take new thinking in terms of the Flagler area on how we regulate parking.
Well, that's fine.
And I think that should be part of our process.
And that's something that you have to look into to see if you're causing any negatives to anyone. As to Mr. Mayor, your desire to move ahead, I too have advocated for sequential parking meters or kiosks along Flagler Avenue. If you really wanna move ahead, let's put it on the agenda and approve it soon. If you want, I'll put it on the agenda. I'll ask for it to be put on the agenda.
I mean, to me, we had four years to get it on the agenda and get it through, so I, I, I'm not interested in trying to push anything like that through that, you know, I, I'm not interested in trying to push it through in what would be perceived to me, if I were in the public, would be perceived as kind of a, you know, you had four years to get it done, and I didn't get it done. So, I, I'm, I'm not personally interested in trying to push it through. Would I love to see it on the very next agenda for the new commission? Sure, but I, I'm not interested in trying to push it through as a last-minute thing for me. I, I made a push when I got elected, you know, I, I came up short, so. All right, so I think what I'm hearing is, if you all can bring us back some options on what that would look like, what the potential impact would be, to me, we've got, we either have to dissolve or extend, so, bring us back the, the options.
Yeah, I'm thinking in the interim, there would be a non-codified ordinance that says effective October 1st, you know, if we're gonna suspend the program, any business impacted by this will not be considered non-conforming until such time as the new system is in place, like Ron and I can work on the wording. But basically, to not create a problem for anyone who has been paying into this system and is required to in order to be conforming.
I like that.
So.
Okay. I think bringing that back.
Well, we'll have to go the 9/13 and 9/27 in order to have it in place by October 1.
Yeah. That'll give us more time to, to talk about it, give you more time to research it, but I, I think I heard enough support to at least have that discussion formal. All right, we're gonna move on to the parking district. So, it's still you or no?
You got a twofer with the presentation, so.
Okay, so it's, that's all, all the, all the above.
It's, he went to Walmart, so buy one, get one free.
All right. Okay, the Turnbull Creek Committee.
The chairman of the committee will give you a report, and then we'll ask any questions you might have.
Don, I'm gonna give you a quick time check. We're trying to get out of here by noon, 12:30 at the latest, so we got about an hour left, so as much brevity as you can, can introduce, I don't wanna shortchange you, but just, we don't have.
I'm gonna be brief.
All right.
So, we have been working to produce the list for properties for the commission to consider for purchase. We've successfully obtained sections off of State Road 44 on both sides, a large portion there, as the, from Jungle Road North that will meet up with the current Holland Park area. In doing that, there still is some question of residents that may still need to give us the easements on the southern section from State Road 44, running all the way through to Mission Road. That's still possible. As the committee has worked with Kalab and with Ron to meet with organizations such as USDA Natural Resources, who have funding to help the city with clearing out those portions. Since we own it now, what do we wanna do with it? So, as the committee has discussed between them, each of the members have come up with methods for finding funding for helping the city to get this cleaned out. One of our questions in our meetings has been, what does perpetuity mean? If we're buying this land under perpetuity, that it'll be maintained under perpetuity, what does that look like? Does that look like what it does right now with limbs and logs and, and closing areas and shallowness, or does it look like something better? What do we wanna do with this land? Do we wanna make it presentable so that you can see the road sign and the, the large border sign that, that distinguishes this as a naturally recognized historic site? So, in that, we have come up with a meeting that was taken place with myself, Kyle was there also, I had Ron there, and, and Commissioner Hartman, that we discussed what was possible. I haven't heard back what was produced, they were gonna come up with a scope of, of that plan, of how they can get involved to help the city with cleaning those areas since we do own it. In the meantime, the committee wants to continue to produce more interest, collecting more interest from the residents on the south section to give us those easement areas and finish connecting the entire parcel, so that we have it from, at least from the north section by Holland Park all the way through. Now, it's a great place to put canoes or kayaks if it's cleaned up. So, our question to the commission is, where do you want us to go next? You want us to continue to pursue ways of finding funding for areas to be cleaned up to make this a useful piece of land and useful for the community, or do you want us to end our game now?
Okay. Mr. Hartman, you were at those meetings, I'll defer to you if you wanna chime in here. Okay. Mr. Hartman, you were at those meetings. I'll defer to you if you want to chime in here. Anything to add or?
I think when we presented this to the citizens back when we went for the bond, it was, it was done in preserving nature and our history and the environment. And to have this much green space within the center of the city almost now, to do nothing with it, I think is the wrong action to take. It needs to be showcased, certainly as it currently is with the growth and, and the shallow areas. And there's even a homeless encampment, I think, on the south side now that's, that's getting fairly large. I think it's a, it's a wrong, we're not being good stewards of the people's money and their property. Cause this property belongs to residents of New Smyrna Beach. So I think we need to continue with the plan that we already have in place and securing the, either the properties and/or the uses along the edge of the, of this canal. Because this is such an important part of what New Smyrna Beach is all about. You know, you talk about charm and this was the beginning of charm. You know, this is when every, the founding fathers came here and dug these canals by hand. So it's just, it's an important part of who we are and what we are. So I think just to step back and do nothing is, is the wrong action to take. We need to continue to go forward. And I think that, that Turnbull Creek Commission has done a, a pretty good job and even have gone out on their own and done some things. So I commend them with that. So anything, you know, that we can do to, to now move forward to the next phase. We've tried to buy all the property we can and, you know, we're not getting very successful with that. We still have money in that, in the fund from that, from the state and the loan that we took and the bond. So I think we should go ahead and move forward with that and so that we can showcase that area and maybe get some of the tourists to do some economic, environmental things instead of going to the beach and parking on Flagler.
You're saying you want to build parking around it? No, I'm just kidding.
No, no, absolutely not. But you know.
What do you mean by showcase? What's that mean?
Well, currently, you know, the, the north part of the canal is fairly open. You can see it. It's a nice, beautiful waterway. But south of 44, you couldn't even tell it's there anymore. You know, that's where we've put the, the signage to indicate, you know, what it is and what, what we've done there. I think we just need to continue with that process. We've had conversations about the observation deck, you know, over by Holland Park. That's moving forward. So I, I certainly think that if we can make that a, a piece of property that people can, kids can walk down along the banks of the canal and say, well, you know, this was such and such. And it was, you know, dug by hand and used to float produce down the canal to the river. And, you know, to me, it's, it's such a vital, important part. And, and to just to say, okay, we're done and we're not going to go any further. I think it's the wrong message to send.
So a concern I have on that, real quick. So first, I, I thank the, the committee. I think the, the work that's been done is fantastic. I am hopeful actually that we're, we're entering into, I mean, there's pros and cons. So I'm certainly not blind to the downsides. But hopefully we're entering into a real estate market, maybe in the coming few years, where we may have some more opportunities and landowners that may be a little more reasonable. And, and we might could make some more strategic purchases. I feel like we, we kind of came into the real estate market with funds, but at a time when it was just, you know, irrational level of, of activity in the, in the real estate market. So we might be well-positioned to be somebody that still has cash on the sidelines as, as the market cools off, you know, a, a little bit. So that's maybe a potential advantage. You know, I guess my concern, I, I hear what you're saying and I'm very familiar with where you're talking about. You know, the, kind of from the 44 South. I've driven by it daily as, as you do. You know, my concern is if you go, if you go north from 44 and you get to, like you go to Jungle and there's a big sign about, you know, don't dump continued trash and littering, we're going to have to stop the fishing. Like my, my, my concern is I don't necessarily want to see it opened up. Like that's not natural either. The canal right now looks like it would if it were just in nature. And so, you know, I, I, I don't want to see it become a, a, a bank, you know, a manicured bank. Because then I think it would just becomes a fishing destination, which leads to littering and all kinds of other stuff in the, so. Yeah, I, I think I could, if it's cleaning up, taking out some invasive species, opening it up a little bit, you know, so that it can be visible, maybe navigable by like a canoe or kayak, although I don't know how you navigate. You know, you can't go under 44. So you're kind of putting in there and trying to go south maybe. I, I don't know how popular or well-used that would be. So I can see doing a little bit, but I, I, I would want to make sure we think through what that would mean and how it would actually get used. Because my, my inclination is more, much more usage would be potential negative side effects than, you know, the, the family that's just out there kind of wandering up and down the banks, talking about the, the great history of the canal. That would probably happen. But I just, I can see it becoming something we're managing and trying to keep people off of and out of and cleaned up potentially as well. So that's, I guess, my concern. So I could see it maybe, maybe we clean it up a little bit, continue to get the access. I fully support that, working with those landowners however we can, to get the access to secure, being able to, you know, always preserve the whole area. And then just being able to do some kind of non-invasive, non-impactful cleaning up so that we improve the flow, clear any blockages, those kind of things, certainly. But I don't, what I'm picturing in my mind, which may not be what you're picturing, you're proposing. You know, this clean bank is not at all what I, what I'm thinking. I, I wouldn't want to see that. So that's where I'm at.
Because the other important part of this is this is part of the stormwater runoff.
Yeah, so cleaning up the flow 100%.
So, so, you know, we're, we're impeding the, the natural flow of the water out of that neighborhood.
Yes.
Those neighborhoods. We've been fortunate this year so far in that we haven't had a really heavy rainy season. So, or, or storm. So, you know, if we, those are the, like you said, get rid of some of the invasive species, so where we're back to the natural stuff and, and clean up the river so that the flow is to where it was, you know, and could be to help with a number of things. You know, the stormwater, the environment and everything else.
Yeah, that, that I can fully support. Any others on this? Commissioner Clowdy.
Uh, yes. When we were having the public sessions on the drainage plan for the Corbin Park area, I did ask that that lower reach of the Turnbull Creek be addressed for carrying capacity. And that is included now in that study, which will give us a really good idea as to how, how much activity should go on in that particular area there. I fully support keeping the committee in place and having them work through. This is the first time I've heard anybody say anybody's doing anything to secure grants. There are, is a lot of environmental money out there that has been going everywhere in this state, except to New Smyrna Beach. We're overdue. We got a, a very big grant to purchase the one tract of land. But we should be going for environmental improvements there. As to people being involved and going on the properties, I wish we could develop a connection to the Sugar Mill Runes. And that way the state could participate in maintaining that particular part right in there. I understand there's an intervening landowner that doesn't want to park with anything. Perhaps when we get the state to join in with us, they might be a little more cooperative. So keep up the good work. It's been fine so far.
Great. Did you have something else?
Yeah, so I don't disagree with anything I've heard. Want to make sure we're compartmentalizing some of this stuff. The committee was set up for the sole purpose of advising, as a citizen group, the tax money to make the purchases. That's it. So I think what we need to do, what I'm hearing is it's time to expand, now that we have acquired some of that land, on what we actually do with the land. What do we do if any? And that's what I'm hearing. I don't want these two issues to cloud up each other's responsibility. I don't know about kids walking, talking about history. I don't know any kids who can walk along the bank and talk about history. I, I, I don't, I'm not sure I'm understanding the extent to which we're talking. I understand cleaning up and removing the Brazilian pepper, the invasive species. I'm 100% on board with that. That doesn't have anything to do with the Turnbull Bay money. The money is solely designated to the purchase of the properties. So I don't want this committee to get too convoluted without very clear and specific direction from us on the dais and staff. So it seems to me to be just kind of getting out there, let's compartmentalize it too. And maybe we need, maybe the Turnbull Bay Committee turns into a recommendation body of people who recommend and help get grants and do things to, to preserve and clean out and make the, make the flow. That would be a natural progression in my opinion. And then when the, as, as, as America pointed out, I think we're going to be well-positioned in the future when the economy slows down, when real estate is not very, very frothy and peaking. And, and we're there, we have the committee who's there and everybody can then take advantage of the opportunity when it comes up. But I just want to be, I want to be very clear and specific about what we're actually doing. What the committee's doing. I don't want to go off in 10 different directions with non-specific items and kind of just ID, big ideas. I, I don't see kids running the banks, learning about history. I think that's an adult thing, not a kid thing. You can sell me on adults doing that, like me. And, but my kids are not saying, dad, 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 take me down to learn history. So how much do we build out, you know? I don't want to build out much. You know, this is the same issue that the county had with Spruce Creek Preserve. How much access does the community, does, does the county provide to the community? And there's a big differing of opinions. And the bottom line is a lot of people just said, hey, you know what? Minimal amount. And I see all of this Turnbull stuff, all this watershed land very similarly. Very limited access. We're not creating programs in buildings and parks and all this stuff. We have, we have Otter Lake or Otter, and, and, and I guess we call it an observation deck now. Is that what we're talking about? The old dock? It's an observation deck now? Okay, that's good for envi, for getting recent funding, I get. So I just wanted to be clear and specific. And I think what staff needs from us is to give some sort of direction of where the committee is and what kind of direction the committee's going to go in, if any, different from just purchasing land. And then we also need to make sure we have committee members willing to want to do that. That's my thoughts.
Such a wise man.
She just called you a wise man?
He's a wise man.
Repeat that louder for the record.
Exactly though, I mean, but that's exactly where we're, I don't want to, just let one come. So, so the committee is willing, as, as I understand, we are willing to do those, those side jobs, looking at possibilities for that. Keeping in mind also that now that the city owns these lands, you know, it's, it's a good stewardship for the city to combine the sections that we do own to that drainage situation that the city has spent, I'm not sure how much, on the surveys and the drainage plans for Corbin Park Road. That creek is imperative for all of that drainage, if it's not opened up. And with USDA's meeting, I'm not sure how far that went. Ron could maybe enlighten us to where that went for including it, since it is a resource corridor and that's the designation of the creek. I believe that it's a good, a good idea to advance us with our title, that if the committee members are willing to advance the title to where we can be an advisory group recommending grants that can help the city. We have those sources. They've met with those sources. So we'll be willing to do whatever you'd like. Just wanted to make sure you had that full update.
Yeah. Let's, Kenny hasn't chimed in yet, so I want to make sure we catch him and then we'll come back to you and go ahead, Commissioner Sox.
Donna, I do have some concerns. Although I support clearing the canal, I'm wondering about the flow of water. If we increase the flow of water on the northern section towards 44, will it have an effect on the drainage basin south of that, towards the high school and the area heading towards the Gabordi Canal? Are they connected? Do you know?
Well, the whole canal is connected.
They're all connected?
Yeah, the whole canal is connected. But an engineer such as, we have discussed with, with Kyle, USDA and A has engineers that'll help with that flow, flow calculations. I can do it for a weird door. I can't do it for 18-foot wide, six-mile-long ditch. But they would have those calculations. And yes, that would need to be considered in, in the planning of that. Again, why we brought in USDA to meet with all of us to, to get a better idea of what's available.
Yes, because I, I'm not sure that you're aware, there have been some concerns and complaints from that lower neighborhood to the north and west of the high school, to give you any description at all, that they're concerned about flooding. So if those water bodies, those canals are connected, I think that should be considered as a whole heading towards the Gabordi. I don't foresee, and I hope I'm wrong, actual public use of the properties south of 44 for a very long time. Therefore, I would like to see the northern portion that we purchased first to get that lookout tower, to get a primitive trail, probably an interpretive trail, which would be a, a very descriptive, helpful thing. And, and let the public finally see what it had, what it had purchased. That, that's a priority for me. But I thank you for your efforts and for the committee as well.
Good, Commissioner.
Yeah, I think we should look at the scope that the committee operates under and revise it to actually include what they're doing right now, because they're doing a good job at it.
We'd be willing. Just let us know what we need to do. In the meantime, any other updates for our meetings that, that the city staff can provide to you? I can relinquish to them to tell you what they know.
Okay, so I, I think what I've heard is kind of, there's, there's probably a, something staff needs to rebrack, bring back to the commission for providing clarity around the role, making sure we, you know, codify this kind of emerging role, if you will, of, of this advisory committee and, and what that scope is, to allow them basically to kind of continue this new phase of the work. And, and so that we're all crystal clear on what that is. But I think I've heard broad support for continuing, continuing that. And then I think they would be the right committee then to bring forward to the commission and make a proposal to say, you know, you've heard support for different things. I mean, that, you know, I think all of us would agree with basically everything that each other said. So bringing forward a very specific, all right, we, we think, you know, start here and do this. You know, put this primitive trail here, clean up the invasive species there, improve the flow here, work with this engineer there. Like I, I think that's what would be coming from them, commission approving. But I think the first step is getting that clarified. Cause I think Vice Mayor is correct. The initial scope was pretty limited. You all are go-getters and have taken initiative. I see several of the committee members here, that, you know, they've taken initiative. So I personally want to lean into that. I think it could be a great resource for future commissions to continue this work, so. All right, anything else?
I'll just, we'll, we'll bring back to you at some time. I will meet with them and, and staff as well and then just come up with, with some recommendation for the commission to consider.
Okay.
We're good. Thank you.
Donna, thank you.
Thanks, Donna.
All right. Next item, e-scooters. I think this was on there because I brought it up. So I'll, I'll kick it off real quick. And I gave Kerry all of 30 seconds heads up right here about where I was going to go with some questioning, although we talked about it briefly before. So the, as I mentioned, gentlemen, and I'll fully own this, this is one of those items that as I travel, I see this in many other cities. I use it in many other cities. These e-scooter rental services, Bird, you know, there's a lot of different names for them. I have about 40 apps on my phone, because it varies every city you land in. And the notion is, what I experienced was you land in some big city, you take an Uber from the airport to the, to the hotel you're staying in. I never rent a car. I never put a car on the street. And then I use this, I use these scooters. If I want to go sightseeing, go to a restaurant, whatever, I use these e-scooters. I'm a business professional. I basically act like a business professional when I'm on the scooter. I try to abide by the, the rules that, that apply. So we brought them here to New Smyrna and I, I was one that kind of pushed for it at the, in the early stages. What I saw during the last spring break, and I'll admit most of this anecdotal, but I think we could fill the chamber up with people that would back up my anecdotal observations. And those were that I didn't see anyone parking and using these to go anywhere. What I saw were kids using them for joyrides. using these to go anywhere. What I saw were, uh, kids using them for joy rides. And I would see the same person just trolling up and down the street 48 dozen times on the sidewalk, weaving through people. Uh, we had an incident at the very end of our last spring break where someone was in front of a, on the busy sidewalk, right there in front of Flagler Tavern, um, where, you know, it's pretty tight quarters. You have like that wall area and then, you know, a curb with, uh, with cars right there. I mean, just trucking through there full speed on the scooter, plowed into someone. Was it, was it you to, no, it wasn't you. It looks familiar. I thought maybe he'd come to give us, give a story. But, uh, anyway, an older gentleman plowed into him, knocked him over. I just happened to be right there on the scene. He was, had a cut on his head. I mean, it was, it was bad. It could have been, could have been bad. Um, I saw another one. They rented it and they were just literally sitting there in front of Flagler Pizza and Cooper, that intersection, just doing donuts in the middle of the road, right in the middle of a Sunday afternoon. Um, so what I saw was these things are, are nuisances in our town. They're causing problems for our residents. Uh, they're causing problems for our guests. They're causing problems for our business and they're causing problems for our police force. Um, so my question now is, we've opened Pandora's box. We've allowed them here. Um, there's a, a lot of, you know, cities have had taken different stances. Some have faulted this, some have leaned into it. It's kind of like the Airbnb discussion. You know, there's, there's legal rights that, that they have to operate, et cetera. So my question for our city attorney is where, what options are available to us? Can, what can we do from where we stand right now? What could we possibly bring back? And then let's, let me see if I can get support from the commission to bring something back.
Uh, so in 2019, Governor DeSantis passed legislation giving, um, operators of motorized scooters or micro mobility devices, all the rights and duties applicable to the riders of bicycles. However, they did give local governments the ability to, um, adopt ordinances governing their operation on streets, highways, sidewalks and sidewalk areas under our jurisdiction. So we can regulate how they operate on our city streets. So we can create areas like Winter Park has, they have certain areas like Hannibal Square Neighborhood, Orange Avenue District, um, Volusia County created certain conservation, well, I don't know that they created the conservation areas, but they have areas where they're prohibited in the beach that you cannot ride them. So we could have, we could craft legislation where, you know, if we want to prohibit them on Flagler and Canal, you know, maybe during special events, um, not on sidewalks, not, we could do that. You could require franchise agreements. We could make it pretty limited.
Yeah. And my, so a couple of things. Number one is there's already rules that they're supposed to follow that they don't. So they're supposed to wear a helmet and they don't. Uh, I mean, full disclosure, I've never worn a helmet when I ride one either, but my worry about some of those is we just further hand police like, hey, please go enforce all this unenforceable stuff. Please be omnipresent, you know, everywhere in our city and, and do this. So I would, I would much rather, if we're able, you know, can we limit the operators? And I'm not so much even concerned about the people that happen to own their own e-scooter because that's not, that's a super small segment of the population. I'm more concerned with the random people that pay a dollar to rent it for 20 minutes. Like it, has any city been able to prohibit or raise the bar and even hold the, uh, the oper, the, the rental operators accountable for violations or issues that are caused, et cetera?
Yes. So I've pulled a bunch of different statutes, um, or actually ordinances.
Yeah.
Um, from different cities. So I kind of would just need to know where you guys want to go with it and kind of drop some things.
So you feel like you could give us some options? So there's some angles we could get there to, to possibly make this?
I could make it super limited. I could, you know, I just kind of need to know where you guys are on this.
All right. Well, let's hear where everyone is on this.
I'm good with it. Let's, I think the hitting the nail on the head is raise the bar so high. And I'd love to toss golf carts in this too.
Oh, man.
I know, I'm in the minority. I'm, I'm only teasing. I'm only teasing. Um, yeah, one of the things, let me ask you. I, I, so I'm not up on this stuff.
Okay.
But I do see sometimes these black scooters or whatever, sitting on a corner.
Yep.
And it just sitting there. And so I imagine that's what these are.
Yes.
And I, where I've seen these things, um, what about insurance requirements? So the exact thing that Russ just said was I seriously doubt there's any much or any real significant insurance requirement. However, if someone injures something on a scooter that I'm providing on my property for someone to take or whoever's running it, I think, you know, a very high insurance requirement, like three, like a $3 million policy and a $5 million aggregate, something to where we can raise the bar that will clearly take care of any kind of significant injury or permanent injury to someone, especially an, an older person who may be in a life, a wheelchair life for the lifetime, if they get hit as you described. So I don't know what the parameters are, but at the very least, uh, a, a very, very high insurance policy that would cover any possible permanent damages to an individual. Flagler Avenue, State Road, where does State Road 44 end and Flagler start? Is, is that, is Flagler ours once at the foot of the bridge?
It's, uh, east of, uh, Peninsula. That's where, uh, our city responsibility starts.
Okay. So Flagler is ours?
Yes.
Great.
I don't really have an opinion on this. Um, you know, I, like you, I've been in cities and seen them used quite a bit and, um, I think they, they have a purpose. But the problem is, um, it's the user. I think our, the biggest problem or concern is the user. And do you, do we want to create such an ordinance that we eliminated all use? And so, you know, but I'm open to suggestions. So it's like, you know, um, i- if the only ones that are using them are, are truly the kids, then, you know, just get rid of them.
Yeah.
C- because, um, you, you know, you, and it's just not the e-scooters. I mean, you see it with the golf carts. You see it with the low speed vehicles, you know? Um, and we certainly don't want our police running around after all of these, you know, minor, minor infractions all day long and not doing real police work. So I think that, uh, any way that we can limit this or actually have a little bit of control, it's something that I could support.
Okay. Mr. Collier?
I don't think Flagler Avenue has the critical mass to support a network of, uh, these e-bikes. Uh, I think by banning them, we wouldn't do any harm to any of the businesses and we wouldn't help them out, uh, other than the owners of, of the business that rents them. So.
It's usually a, it's usually a chain, a franch, a national though. They're not local.
I could support getting rid of them, to put it clearly.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Sax, anything else?
Uh, tough question to get rid of the e-scooters. Um, I think Vice Mayor McGurk may recall discussions in the TPO years ago about multimodal transportation, how much I supported it. I don't know about you. You may have, but a lot of people supported it because people couldn't afford gas. They wanted more economical vehicles, bicycles, uh, low speed vehicles, you name it. But now we have negative consequences from all of these different vehicles interfacing with each other, uh, riding on sidewalks, riding where they're not supposed to, riding against traffic, all kinds of infractions that the police can't keep up with. They, honestly, I, I wouldn't expect them to unless they saw something flagrant right in front of them, which was a hazard. So, you know, being a kind of a tourist Mecca, I, I'm not surprised that we see a, uh, the prevalence of e-scooters now. I was walking down our multi-use trail and almost got run off the trail by one of the motorized skateboards. A young, large fellow on a skateboard, I don't know how he balanced, just about pushed me off the trail. And, and so we have these conflicts with these vehicles, especially with the low speed vehicle, the golf cart, uh, basically. So, uh, and again, as I said at the last meeting, the county has banned the, uh, the skateboard from their beach and yet we still see them up and down the beach, traveling at 15 miles an hour. So, uh, at this point, I would take it under advisement as what we should do with e-scooters. I mean, we're renting just about everything out there and people are buying them. Um, I, I didn't know what an e-scooter was till I went on my, uh, Google and, uh, looked it up, basically a scooter, but I would certainly prohibit them from sidewalks because it, it seems they don't get out of the way for pedestrians. So that's a problem right there. That's obvious. And that's all I have as far as e-scooters.
Yeah. And certainly, I mean, I think cities, all cities will, will have to continue this discussion as alternative forms of transportation, the, you know, the boosted skateboards, the e-bikes that can do 25, 30 miles an hour, e-scooters, one wheels. I mean, you know, this is a whole emerging, uh, space that's, you know, is going to continue to cause consternation. Um, my scope is very limited. I'm trying to take the 80/20 approach. 80% of the problems I saw in, in that limited engagement, the challenge, I mean, go any Friday night and, and just, you know, sit on Flagler for a couple of hours, pick your favorite spots, sit there for a couple of hours and watch and just see if you see, uh, you know, see, see who you see, uh, riding these scooters and whether or not they're following, you know, proper, proper safety, uh, and, and just common sense, frankly. Um, so, you know, my, um, yes, low speed vehicles, e-bikes, golf carts, gonna have to do something eventually, gonna have to figure that out. But for now, if we can attack this and if, and to me, the way to attack it is not trying to, yes, let's make the rules around it, but if we can do something where they're not here, if the operator isn't able to have the little rental thing set up, the way they work, by the way, for the, for those that don't know, so an operator comes in, so Bird or whoever, this kind of national entity comes in and they set up, uh, they work with some business, they, I don't know the exact arrangement, but they get some, you know, some lease, uh, some small lease revenue off of it, the business does. And they set up like a little station where these can live. Uh, but for the most part, they, they're highly mobile, so they just kind of drop them off in your city and then they, they get rented by folks and then as they, uh, as they go down in charge, other people have other apps on their phone that show them where the scooter is and what the charge level is. They go around and pick them up, usually two or three in the morning. They go around and pick them up, throw them back to their truck, take them to their house, charge them, and then come back out and drop them back off in, in locations around, around town. And they get paid to do that by this, uh, by the entity. So, um, you know, it's a very low, low economic impact activity in reality. Um, so I, I'm very comfortable with trying to move away from that and limit the operations as best we can. So, all right, I think I heard support, Kerry, to bring us some options, uh, some options back.
So just a discussion item on a agenda? Do you foresee like a workshop with Baba or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
I don't. If Baba wants to chime in, they can.
Okay. So I'll do a discussion item and.
Bring in the discussion item and then hopefully we'll have enough support to convert it to an ordinance and get that done. Yes.
I think the, the intent of the e-scooters, uh, I think it did not meet the intent in New Smyrna on Flagler, because you go to other cities and you've seen them, they've used exactly what you indicated before. So, but, um.
It was kind of telling to me that there's, I mean, my, my vision, I guess, was somebody would maybe park on Flagler and now all of a sudden they're using it to come down to a restaurant on Canal Street. But you don't ever see them over here. You don't see them anywhere else. Like that's, I mean, I, I go two or three or four miles. I was in Austin a couple of weeks ago and I, I went to a restaurant that was four miles away on, on an e-scooter. So again, kept an Uber off the road, kept a rental car off the road. Um, you know, it felt very safe in, in doing it. Um, so, but that's just not the, how they're being used in New Smyrna that I have seen at, at all. So they're not helping our traffic or parking and they're causing other, other issues.
Fully, fully agree.
All right. Uh, last item is open discussion by the city commission. So this is your chance to, if there's any other things you wanted to bring, uh, before your colleagues today for trying to get consensus, resolve, whatever it may be, um, this is your chance to do so. We'll, we'll just come down the line if that's all right. We'll start down there.
Uh, basically I just have a comment concerning our budget. Uh, as hopefully everybody knows, I'm opposed to any increase in the milage rate. Uh, I, I must say I was pleasantly surprised I got my proposed tax bill and my taxes are basically staying the same, going down very slightly. However, when you look at it in detail, I looked at my own taxes that are collected from New Smyrna Beach. For whatever the reason, my taxes are going up 9.3%. They're exceeding the inflation rates. Luckily, the reason my taxes aren't going up is because other governmental agencies are living within their, their means and keeping their milage rates lower. It's just unbelievable to me that we are raising rates to the point where my taxes are going up 9.3%. That's it. I can't get over that. I have nothing else to add.
Okay. Mr. Sax.
Well, gentlemen, since it won't be long before you won't see me on this dais, um, and you may not see me at the podium either for long, uh, I do have concerns for our city. Um, when we first came here about 20 years ago, it, it was kind of a sleepy little town. It was also dependent on the economy at the time, but it was pretty clean, was very friendly, wasn't that crowded. But a lot can happen over 20 years. And what I see is a very popular town, um, with major constraints in size, road infrastructure, hopefully not water for potable use in the future. Those are my concerns and always will be. I, I think we're, we're going in the wrong direction as far as that goes because water will become more expensive and harder to find. And we don't have the size of our city to improve our roadway infrastructure. Um, those are the biggest concerns. And it's our residents that we really should be taking care of primarily. Yes, our economy, our commerce, our business is important as well, but who pays the bulk of the taxes? It's the residents. And we need to start fixing up things in our city. We haven't really gotten a good hold of that. Um, my saying was let's fix up the plumbing in the old part of the house before we build an addition. And that, that's really where I'm at as far as our city's concerned. Our parks are still in somewhat disrepair. I know it takes money, but, um, it's been eight years and Riverside Park still needs, um, some sprucing up, some improvements as far as safety goes, in fact, and several other parks. So, um, as far as our city goes, yes, uh, I still love it here. I still think there's promise in our city. Uh, I don't want us to get to a place where our quality of life has diminished. And, um, that will always be my worry, but we always have a beach and we always have the river. And, uh, hopefully we can, with the right, um, management going forward, uh, keep those for, uh, for our future. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to keep fresh in your head. Um, one of the things I'm going to be going forward very heavily on for the next year is the opportunity grant for the US One Corridor specifically for motels and a change of use. It is the one area where we've had no progress. Um, the US One CRA was specifically identified because of this problem and this specific use. It was the driving force of the statistics of the crime and the, uh, you, and, and, and taking up the resources of the police department over and over and over again. So we now have a halfway house operating out of one of these. So if we don't start taking aggressive action, we're going to go backwards. We're losing ground on this. So the opportunity, the key is using the C, the CRA as an opport, create an opportunity grant for anyone who wants to buy one of these old motels, which Chitwood described as crime incubators, which I think was a perfect description of it. And we're, my concern is we can look like, uh, Daytona and Holly Hill along US One if we're not careful. We won't get to the, quite that extent. We won't get to quite that extent, but if these uses just operate in the seedy world that they currently do, and the best we can get out of them is a halfway house, we need to take aggressive steps to encourage redevelopment. Mike, you talk about taxes. Nothing worse than having a business, a part of your business model that is not performing up to par, US-1 and all the motels. We're not getting a tax generation from the businesses that we should be because they're so underutilized and repressed. So again, that, again, that's the theory behind the CRA to begin with. You take an underachieving area, you put reinvestment into it, and then it lifts up the property taxes for the, for permanently and perpetuity, long-term. So this is exactly what US-1 is doing. It's underperforming in many of the properties along it, and most specifically the motel use. So if we can get the grant opportunity for a change of use, for people to come in and put reinvestment, that was the whole part of the discussion of the US-1 CRA, what can be done and how it pays for itself in the long run. So, I, at some point, you know, I'm pushing staff, wait till we get past the elections because it takes time, and I've been slowly egging the collar on a little bit, so all my intent is just to keep it fresh in everybody's mind of what eventually I'm going to want to be property for the commission. Thanks.
So, I'll add to taxes, but mine's a little differently. Before you is a list of 90-some properties that are surrounded on three sides by city boundaries. These are little pockets of parcels that are non-city residents. Some of them are business. You can see to the right, there's a 22-acre tract of land that's not in the city. We now no longer have any control over that. We're no longer doing the, in charge of the planning, the building, the code enforcement, it's not affected by police and fire, yet these are all encompassed in the city limits of New Smyrna Beach in the ISBA. We need to do something about these pieces of property so that we can actually start forcing, not, I'd say forcing, but, and we've tried the encouragement. For years, it's been a voluntary. We've included, not even included, not charging them for the entire process. Supposed to send out letters to each of these property owners, encourage them to come into the city, because it's actually a benefit to them, it lowers their tax rates. But these are tax revenue generating properties that we're missing out on and is causing us confusion, causing some confusion in public safety. It's the same thing with, and we had this discussion the other day when we were talking about the noise ordinance. What if I'm a county person, what if the noise is coming from a county person, but I'm a city resident? Who enforces it? You know, do I have to wait for the county code enforcement person to come out? So these are, there's nothing harmful about annexing these properties into the cities. It cleans up our lines, it clears up some of these little pieces, out parcels, and it certainly gives us a little bit of a right in control. There are several, several of them are over five-acre tracts, you know, which could, you know, at some point in time come before the county as a PUD or a special project and be zoned, and then we have no say-so or no control. So, I just encourage you that, I'd like to have a consensus that we move forward to legislatively start annexing these properties into the city limits of New Smyrna Beach. They're already a part of the Utilities Commission's service area, so there's no difference there. You're collecting the trash from them already, so the only benefit is we're not collecting the taxes and the stormwater fees that we're actually paying for, for most of these, because they're all in pockets, you know, this is our donut hole. So I would encourage you to kind of support us going forward in coming up with it, whether it's ordinance or resolution to move forward in the annexing these properties in.
You, I'm sorry, were you finished?
No, I'm done, yeah.
You mentioned specifically surrounded, this is those that are surrounded on three sides by the city versus just every, every property that's kind of within...
I'd like to do everything in the ISBA.
No, I agree, but is, does that, isn't there something with, once it becomes surrounded on multiple sides? I've studied this a little bit.
I think legislatively, yeah, we can annex them in, yeah. We just haven't taken that position because we strictly relied on the voluntary annexations.
I got you. That's where I thought you were going with it.
Right.
I just want to make sure I was clear on what opportunity that presented. So, question for staff, and you may not know off the top of your, first of all, I'm just trying to pull it up here, but I see row 66, the Utilities Commission hasn't annexed it yet. Row, yep, two rows up from where your country is.
Yeah, I see that.
So is the parcel, is it 200 Canal Street is the parcel address or the owner address? The side, the side address, it looks like is over in Corbin Park Road. I didn't know they had property in Corbin Park Road.
The parcel number is what it's...
I got you, yeah, which I was trying to pull up, anyway. So, I mean, obviously we could hopefully entice them to annex it.
So the challenge, as you know, I mean, I agree conceptually, but I have never seen a more contentious meeting than county residents thinking we were going to force them into the city. That was when we were setting up the voluntary annexation program, purely voluntary. I mean, we needed a lot of police presence at that meeting. It was impressive. I mean, you pretty much felt like, I'm gonna be fighting my way out of this place, and I'm not exaggerating. So, I agree with you, but we're gonna get a tremendous amount of pushback, and maybe the way to do it is, or one of the ways that would help is, there's a lot of misconceptions that people live in the county have about what they can do in the county but can't do in the city, and one of those is shoot their guns. That is the most common thing that I hear. I live in the county, I can shoot my guns. Where do you live? Oh, I live down in Bethune Beach. I'm like, no, you can't. Or, I live in Corbin Park. I'm like, no, you can't shoot a gun in a residential neighborhood regardless if you're in the city or county. So, some of the more rural ones out by, out Turnbull or something, you know, that may get a little different, but the key is, is to, if we do it, have some sort of educational process that hits some of those things really hard. There was also, and believe it or not, there was also little fire pits. There, you know, in the county, they can build a fire pit in their backyard, in the city, there's some regulation to that, but part of that is probably, yeah, there's a rule, but nobody's gonna enforce that. I'm, you know, having a fire pit built in my backyard, so...
And Vice Mayor, we do have, if you remember, frequently asked questions regarding this specific question that we get from the county residents that they would like to annex. We do have all these questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just gonna maybe need to target a little more because we haven't a good idea of what they care about, like maybe can't shoot guns in residential neighborhoods, city no, county no.
Well, that was what I hoped the purpose of the mail-out was gonna be, was to clear up some of the misinformation. I've probably handed out, and thanks to Bob, he's created that little frequently asked questions, and here's the benefits, you know, based on the tax base for whatever year. I've handed out 50 of those door-to-door, and we're not getting any response whatsoever, but yet it still creates problems for us.
Yeah.
You know, you've got businesses on West Canal that are in county property, you know, we have no jurisdiction over them now, so, you know, it just gives us, I mean, gives me some concern about some of the others issues that we've been dealing about going, oh, well, that was done in the county 20 years ago, well, it could be done in the county tomorrow, and again, we'll have no control over it until they annex it. So, I just think it's time that we take a little more proactive response on some of these issues.
Question?
Go ahead, I'll, go ahead.
Should we offer incentives? Would that work?
Like, we've offered them incentives, we've offered to pay the full price of annexation, which could be a couple hundred bucks from what I understand.
Doesn't seem to work.
And the other annexation is their taxes will go down, even at a 9% increase, they'll pay less taxes than they would have, you know, otherwise.
And they can have chickens.
Right, and, yeah, and you know, they're, you know, they eliminate the fire fee, they're gonna, I mean, we're providing services to these people anyway. The only issue is when law enforcement's involved, it's a jurisdictional issue, but fire we're dealing with now, you know, a lot of these, we're doing roads, we're doing the stormwater, I mean, we're, we're looking at spending millions of dollars for a stormwater project in both Corbin Park and the historic West Side, and probably half of all those residents are still county residents. They're paying county stormwater to the county, not to the city of New Smyrna Beach, who's trying to do something about it, so.
Yeah.
Send them my way, I'll talk to them.
So are you, I mean, well, I mean, I'll say it this way, I won't put you on the spot, but I'll say this. I, I wasn't there for that meeting, I can only imagine, but I'm, it's easy for me to say because it'll probably all happen more than 69 days from now, but to me, we should say, if we have the power to force the annexation, you force the annexation. I mean, that's just where I'm at. This, this system's making, the system makes no sense. If they didn't want to be in the city of New Smyrna Beach, don't move to the city of New Smyrna Beach. If you want to be in the county, move to the county, we have our, we have our operating boundaries. And so I think, now, for some places like, you know, Silver Sands, places like that, that's a whole different discussion because that's kind of its own, you know, that's its own area, but this, these are, every address that I'm seeing here, this is the hole-in-the-donut addresses, this is a whole different conversation.
This is smaller than the hole. These are, these are little enclave.
But I'm saying every one of them, we're not talking about those big areas like a Silver Sands, which is where you get that real demonstrative, and even that, I think that that has shifted, I think there's some, you know, but I think for these, we engage with a marketing, and we engage with them, you know, whether it be internal or external, to me, it wouldn't be hard to list out why we're doing it, what the advantages are to the person, and our authority to do it, if we think we have that authority, and I think the legislator has given us the authority, because even the legislator in their wisdom is determined that it makes no sense to have these kind of enclaves. I've said it a billion times, no other business besides the city government would draw a service delivery boundary like this. We're the only entity that would, that would tolerate this. UPS would throw this out tomorrow. So, if you're proposing, pushing forward with a, hey, you're, you admit all the definitions per state requirement, we have the ability to annex you in, and so therefore you're annexed in, congratulations, here's all the pros, I can support that. I don't know if it can happen that fast, but I would certainly support it, and even when I'm not in office, I continue to advocate for that. And by the way, families in the, in the hole-in-the-donut, we all annexed in years ago, many of our neighbors have it, we talk about it routinely, many have, those that understand the issues have, so. I do occasionally burn stuff in my yard, though, I don't know, I guess I need to check the rules on that.
You can have a small recreational fire, it's easily controlled by a garden.
All right, well, that's, that's it, that's exactly what it is, smorgasbord, we just do smorgasbord. All right, so that was your time, any other?
That's, that's all I had.
Okay. I wanted to come back to two things, Commissioner, so, let me know how I can help, and then... Vice Mayor, completely agree with everything you just said, and it's interesting to tie in to the budget. If you recall, we're at 90% residential, 10% commercial. Commercial pays higher taxes and uses less services, every study will show you, than residential. So if we want to improve our budget, if we want to improve our operating efficiency, not only do we need to address things like what we just saw from Commissioner Hartman, but we also need to attack this issue and get the highest investor use out of commercial property, especially brownfield commercial property that's already developed, that green space as possible, and this is the lowest of low-hanging fruit. So, could not agree more. I drove, it's funny, because I drove down US-1 the other day and I saw a for sale sign out in front of one of those hotels, and I, literally my first thought was, oh, you know, like, hopefully, but if we could do something to add a little bit to the hope and the prayer, I'd fully support it. I don't know what that looks like, I don't know how you fund it, but I would fully support that, and again, even when not in office can advocate. On the budget, you know, it's tough, I, I got my tax bill as well, my taxes are going down. Yeah, there's nuances to that, but overall, my taxes are going down. I would continue to point to the lowest operating millage of, of all 16 entities with the exception of Deberry, who has some other factors in there. We're significantly lower than the county and many others, so when we compare this year, if we're gonna do that, if we're gonna say, well, everybody else is able to be, you know, whatever, and so therefore, you know, we should too, well, then we gotta drag at least five to 10 years of history in as well. So let's make sure that all those years that we kept our millage flat, they also did that. Because my prediction is, if we actually studied that, that while we were being very judicious, while we were the ones holding tax bills down, that they were ratcheting it up to be debt-free as a, as a county, to give the staff increases that they needed to give, all of those kind of things. So, it's a little dangerous to get into this, you know, just looking at this one point in time and saying, well, they did this, so we should be able to do it, because we're gonna back ourselves in a corner, and, and again, the majority of the increases this year were staff pay related, a lot of that centered in police and fire, so, you know, we were very transparent on that. I, I don't love paying taxes any more than the, than the last person, the next person, but we, you know, we debated that publicly many times, we've had the discussion publicly many times. My anticipation is that this will be, I think we'll again be able to get to a point as a city where with the increase in property values that we typically enjoy in a typical cycle, we can again get back to holding a relatively flat millage, as long as the general public doesn't pass some decree and say we have to more than double everyone's wage, or the majority of employees' wages, which is what happened to us two years ago, when we raised the minimum wage in Florida from $7.50 to $15 an hour. I mean, I don't know who did that and then expected there not to be downstream consequences, but here they are. So that's kind of where I'm at on that. So, all right, anything else from staff?
Yeah, thanks to the Commission, hopefully we get some clear directions here that we could move forward on some of these items, and we appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you all, meaning adjourned.